Select Board Meeting for September eighth, two thousand and twenty. Before we get started with our agenda this evening, Vanessa asked me if you could make a brief comment, so I will allow that.
Thank you, Mark. I just want to take a moment to say I am humbled and honored by the support I received in this recent election and the results coming out of Tuesday. I am indebted and grateful to my family, my friends and colleagues for their love, their encouragement and their generosity over these last seven months. To all the residents of Reading, regardless of how you voted, know that I am here tonight and moving forward in everything I do with a commitment to serve as a volunteer elected official here in Reading. Where we all call home. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Vanessa. So, for this evening, you folks able to see the shared screen? Is that working? Great, thank you. So, just for the logistics, I want to make sure that we're, it's been a few weeks, we're back on track. So, tonight we're broadcast on RCTV, Verizon Channel thirty-three, Xfinity Channel twenty-two, also available on Facebook Live, the link from RCTV and YouTube. For public comment, it'll be this evening at about seven forty-five. This relates to public comment, just in general, not specific to the public hearing that we're having this evening. We've asked that people just send us an email indicating their desire to speak, and I know that we have, I believe, at least one person that has expressed a desire to speak. Sorry about that. I know that this is posted regularly, but just to be clear, please, folks, any questions or about resources that are available, go to the town website, readingma.gov. You can send emails, depending on the specific issue, if it's Human or Elder Services, if you'd like to help, if you have general questions. You can also call Town Hall, seven eight one nine four two six six eight zero. There's a menu of options that will be there. You can leave your name and number, and as always, if ever it's an emergency, you should be calling nine one one. Tonight's agenda, we'll start out with a COVID nineteen response. We have Carrie, sorry, I've lost you on my screen, but you back? You are, gotcha, thank you, Carrie Donald from the Board of Health, and Bob will speak briefly in terms of COVID nineteen. Then Laura Gem will speak, give us an update on elections, past and future. We haven't done liaison reports for a couple of meetings, so let's talk through meetings that we've attended and any updates from those. We then have a public hearing scheduled at seven thirty, so we'll open the public hearing, relates to Jay and Ricky Inc., so this is Ricky's Liquor and requesting an alteration of premises that was in the board packet. At the conclusion of that hearing, we'll go to public comment. After public comments, we'll hear from the Climate Advisory Committee Sustainability and Master Plan, again in the packet. Sorry, there's kind of a, there was a duplicate in here, it says closed warrant at the same time as it said sustainability, I tried to press that out as best I could. Tonight we'll be discussing the warrant at nine thirty, and then we do have a deadline of nine twenty-two, our next meeting to close the warrant, so we do have to do that as an item of business at our next meeting. We'll have a discussion on the stretch code bylaw, motion to vote for the board to sponsor that. The Reading Coalition, I asked if they would come in and speak briefly about what they're doing, specific to a lot of the mental health focused activities that they've moved to during this COVID period. And they're a great resource that the town has, and it's just a nice opportunity for them to say a few words about what they're doing and share the resources specifically with everyone. At nine o'clock, we have a discussion of the town manager goals for fiscal twenty-one. Again, it was in the packet, we'll talk through where we are for that. Nine thirty, Bob's going to give an overview of the warrant for November twenty twenty town meeting. About nine forty-five, we have two sets of minutes that are in the packet, would like to vote on both of those, approve those this evening. We'll talk about future agenda items and that has us roughly on a ten o'clock timetable. So, with that, let me ask Carrie, first of all, maybe from the Board of Health perspective, you could give us a quick update? And I'll stop sharing and bring back the pictures, there we go.
Mark, could I ask a quick technical question?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Are we being recorded? I've become accustomed to seeing like the red recording, recorded, recording button in a Zoom call, and it may just be that we're being recorded by RCTV, but I'm not seeing the red recording button.
Caitlin, is that the situation?
Yeah, you're being recorded by RCTV.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you, Carrie.
Hi, thank you for having me. In terms of COVID nineteen, the Board of Health continues to meet, we've reduced our schedule somewhat. We're meeting now twice a month more if need be. One of us is attending the regular command meetings, and we'll adjust that schedule as need be. The caseload in, sorry, in Reading is up very slightly, and what we do know about that is that it, there are some instances of family cases. So, we're keeping an eye on, on what's happening in town and, you know, noting if there are any notable cases of transmission. And I guess then, I'll just say this morning, I was at another meeting, and right now we have some great news in that the Massachusetts hospitals, none of them are using surge capacity, that's really outstanding. And the caseload, the seven day lagging caseload is as low as it has been at any point in the pandemic, and that's excellent. And hopefully, you know, people continue to use social distancing and face coverings and keep each other safe and over the holiday weekend, and, you know, we'll be able to continue that trend.
The seven day caseload being a record low, is that for all of Massachusetts or for Reading?
That's for Massachusetts. That's, yeah, that's, that's the overall Massachusetts standard, we look at the dashboard through work and look at it that way, so. Always good to have contact.
Any other questions for Carrie? So, just a quick update for everyone. The, we're working diligently to support the Board of Health and get them, the crew that they need. The open position has been posted. The timing for that means that the VAST will be meeting before our September twenty-second meeting, and then on the twenty-second, the VAST will make our recommendation to the full board in terms of how to proceed there, to get them up to full capacity.
Mark, if I, if I may, just thank you again to the board for coming in during a unscheduled, for an unscheduled meeting to consider how best to approach filling that gap and appreciate that effort and support.
And for the sake of the public, it's a little different than we discussed at our last meeting, because now we've posted, so new applicants can apply. Until what, until what date?
Is it the end of this week? Do we know what the fifteen day posting would be?
Yeah, the end of the posting would be the end of this week, but I'd have to check the posting to see if we actually put a cutoff date. We don't always.
Yeah, yeah, please, if you're interested, please apply anyway, but if you want it now, please do it soon. Awesome, thanks, Carrie. Great, okay, Bob, let me pass it off to you, please.
Thank you, a couple of things. Command has also altered their meeting schedule to be the Monday before the Board of Health meets, and then obviously we can, can meet as needed also. I put all the meeting notes in your packet this week, you know, if you have interest, we'll certainly continue that. Usually the notes are done, say, two, three days after the command meeting. Depending on whether that coincides with your packet that week or not, I may send them out by themselves in advance. Lastly, I was on a call with the state today and all the other cities and towns. And Carrie, this is something that we discussed last Thursday at the Board of Health meeting briefly, so this will be a little bit of an update. This is a governor's order COVID nineteen, number forty-nine, so he's got forty-nine orders. August twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty, supporting parents with children in remote learning. So, this is the order that talks about having learning pods for parents to be able to sort of share children. And then specifically in Reading, there's an applicant for a much larger space that's been in progress for a few weeks now. Today I learned that the applicant that's been in progress has to retroactively fit into the process that they've laid out. Unfortunately, the process has not been laid out in, in words yet. The state hoped to post some advice tonight. They did share a PowerPoint today that was helpful, if I could have taken quick pictures, but I took good notes. One thing I did today, the Commissioner of Early Education and Care said that the mayors and town managers should use their executive authority to appoint what's called the Municipal Approving Authority under that order. When, when pressed as to who that should be, you know, school, school committees, school department, police department, et cetera. She said the state was not offering any guidance or any advice, but that it could be a combination of entities. Where it's a cross disciplinary approach, today, under that act and under that order, I appointed the Incident Command Team, which consists of both chiefs, the superintendent and myself, and then possibly a rotating member of the Board of Health to technically fill out that role. Once the state releases written guidance, town council can evaluate it and can determine if, if indeed I have the authority to do that. And if not, the board may be asked to do this at your next meeting. The state asserted that I did, I'm not so sure. But in any event, we'll have it covered. It was important that I did something today, even if it has to be revised, because the applicant is seeing CPDC tomorrow night, has already extended offers to parents, so away we go as it is. So, I just wanted to update you that you may see something at your next meeting, and it may be a little more involved, but I didn't want you to be surprised. And Carrie, there will be a lot more information forthcoming on that order, I know we talked about it at the Board of Health meeting on Thursday. So, that's all, thank you, Mark.
Bob, has the applicant been made aware presumably of the new EEC order?
You know, he had a meeting today that I had to step out of for this, so I don't know yet. But from the update I got from the meeting was that it went well, and that he has a lot of work to do tomorrow for CPDC, independent of this, and that we'd tell him along the way. It's, it's not really a burden on the applicant, it's really a burden more on staff to follow certain procedures and file certain documents the state requires, it's really not any different for the applicant.
Does it change the timeline for the applicant?
It shouldn't matter, no.
Vanessa, please.
Thanks, Mark. Bob, I heard you mention that, that the Incident Command Group includes a member from the Board of Health. Is there a reason why there isn't a staff member handling that? I know the Board of Health has been dealing with a lot lately and in the last couple of months. Is there someone on staff that can provide that input or role and report back to the Board of Health to try and alleviate some of the burden on that crew?
Well, this was a determination made last March, and the board hasn't changed their opinion. What they have done is discuss whether they want to rotate membership, so I'll leave that up to a discussion if they want to have it.
Okay, thank you.
Questions or comments? No, all set. Carrie, thanks, I think you're dismissed.
And just to say, Bob, I did appreciate the summaries of the command meetings, I found that helpful and would appreciate receiving them going forward, I found them very informative.
Okay, you bet.
Thank you, good night.
Thanks. Next up, Laura, Town Clerk Elections Update. I would first like to express my personal appreciation for handling a mammoth task so well and getting everything done. There was a person who sent in a, like a commendation for you into the public comment, and it was great, it was really spot on, so thank you for managing that.
Well, thank you. One of the things that I wanted to start off saying is that we mailed out, let me get my exact numbers here. We mailed out six thousand eight hundred and ninety-one ballots for the recall and then six thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine ballots for the primary. So, that's well over twelve thousand ballots, over thirteen thousand ballots. And I have to say that without the help of the students from the National Honor Society, we never would have been able to pull that off. So, I just want to, at one point, we had students just coming in when they were available for time wise, and they spent an hour or two. We had volunteers that came in and spent the entire day for two weeks in a row. Almost seven days a week for two weeks, and we had staff not taking days off to get through this. But I really want to thank the kids from the National Honor Society and, and all of the volunteers for the help that they did. Because again, we would not have been able to pull that off. So, with that said, we also had about twenty-four hundred ballots done through early voting during the week that we had early voting. And then we had just over, about, just over forty-five hundred per election for, in person on Election Day. As you probably know, that this, in throughout statewide, this has been the most, the highest turnout primary in some time, going all the way back. The, we had one point five million statewide, and the highest we had prior to that was one million. So, for a state primary, so I'm assuming that the mail-in ballot played a huge role in that. And, and the state is assuming that as well, which is a good thing, which also tells me it's going to stick around. So, once we get through November, we'll be working, the town clerks will be working with the state to come up with a little bit more of a automated process. So, it's not so labor intensive. And with that said, you know, like I said, I want to definitely thank the kids from the National Honor Society that did a lot of volunteer hours. But we're going to be calling on them again, because we're going to be doing the same thing again in November. It's going to be a little bit easier, it'll be less chaotic, because it'll be one election, one ballot. But we'll be calling on them again to be able to get through that as well. Usually for a November presidential election, we look between, look at between eighty and ninety percent turnout. We're probably going to end up very close to a hundred percent turnout. So, that's twenty thousand registered voters that are going to be sent to ballot. So, we'll definitely be calling on more help and more volunteers. Yes, Vanessa, you had a question?
I do. Laura, I know that we, as select board members, are not allowed to participate in the local election. Can we volunteer our time for the presidential election?
You can volunteer to help with before the election day, like the election mailing out the ballots and that sort of thing, but you cannot work on Election Day. So, yeah, we'll definitely be needing some help with that, with mailing out ballots.
Thank you.
So, go ahead.
I was like, Karen was muted.
Sorry, I had a question, Laura, when you finish.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I was wondering, so is the state going to be helping us out with some of the postal expenses? We had to put a lot of stamps on this time, the wedding stamps.
Yeah, that's because I cleared the post office of every seventy cent stamp that they had. So, they, they did help out some with this one, because the, the mail-in ballot law stated that the municipality would be putting on postage for the outgoing, but the state put on postage for the return. So, they'll be doing the same thing again in November, they're paying for the return postage, but we have to do outgoing. And it just, we, we could have put the ballots through the machine instead of putting the stamps on, but the machine doesn't handle them as well, which means that we have to use the stickers. And, you know, we looked into the cost of the stickers, and it would have cost us about two thousand dollars just for those stickers. So, I'm like, let's just buy the stamps and, and save that additional two thousand dollars. So, that was the purpose behind the stamps.
Did I also read in the Chronicle that you guys had some new technology debuting in the fieldhouse? I wasn't allowed in there, but I was reading about it.
You weren't allowed in the fieldhouse?
Well, I mean, I tried not to since I wasn't voting.
I hear you. Yeah, so we used, if anybody had early voted, we've had early voting since two thousand and sixteen, as you know. And we've been using the poll pads during early voting since two thousand and sixteen. And we use those at the fieldhouse instead of the voting list. Part of the reasoning for debuting them in September was to not have, from a perspective of, of safety for the, the election workers, they didn't have to flip through paper that everybody else was touching. They, because the voting list was basically done away with, and it was basically an iPad. And it speeds up the process of getting the voters through as well.
That sound like it was a good move?
And it saved, for both elections, it saved about forty-eight thousand sheets of paper.
That's awesome.
So, one of the things that I wanted to mention, you know, is that we are going to be making a few changes for November. There's some things that we kind of ran into during the September election, so I'll be talking with Command making a few changes with the setup of the fieldhouse to make it go a little bit smoother than it did in September on the first. But considering that we still had over four thousand people show up at the fieldhouse, we need to just kind of make it, you know, keep it safe for everybody, and there are quite a few people in Reading that believe that they still want to devote in person. But the other thing I'd like to get the word out about is that some of them came in and voted in person, because they felt like that if they mailed their ballot back, that it wasn't going to make it back on time, and there are some cases where that did happen, just a few. But it will, for one, we'll have a better opportunity of start getting the ballots mailed out sooner in November. In September, the system was not ready for us to start that process until two weeks before the election. We literally had two weeks to mail all those ballots out and come up with the process. So, we're now in a position where we can get started sooner. But if, if a ballot, if they request a ballot, if the public requests a ballot by mail, then, and they feel like that they want to, they can drop it in the town hall box for business versus mailing it back to be sure that we get it back. So, that's something we just need to get out there. And we did have quite a few that did that, dropped it in the box instead of mailing it. But I just want to make sure that that's known, that it, that way they don't have to worry about their ballot being returned.
And Laura, do I understand correctly that you ended up emptying that box extremely regularly, especially in the final few days?
Yes, we, the last week, we emptied it three to four times a day. And the final weekend before the election itself, we emptied it five to six times on Saturday and Sunday.
Great, so this is the silver box that's kind of as you're driving out of the town hall parking lot?
Correct.
On your left hand side.
Yep, and we put a sign on there saying ballots, you know, put ballots here, or drop ballots here, so that you, everybody is familiar with that's the box to put it in. Yeah, so, just kind of help, I'm just asking to kind of help get the word out, you know, to drop the, once the ballots start going out, we'll have the ballots more than likely by the first week of October, and we'll start mailing them out immediately. Like I said, we're in a bit, a little bit better position than we were in September as far as that process.
Both the ballot applications and the ballots themselves will be mailed out, could be mailed out as early as early October?
The ballot, the ballot applications are going to go out from the Secretary's Office on September fifteenth. The ballots themselves will start getting mailed out as soon as we receive them, and usually we get them three to four weeks before the election, so I'm figuring we'll have them the first week of October at the very, at the very latest. So, we'll start that process immediately.
Laura, if, if people asked for a mail-in ballot for all elections, when they receive the last mailing from the Secretary of State, will we still be receiving another mailing from the Secretary?
No, no, the Secretary is only sending out those that haven't already requested. Let me just, let me just clarify that. They're sending out notices to anybody that was not in the system that they requested a ballot by September first. As of September, I'm sorry, as of August thirty-first, we had that anybody requested it, we had them in the system. So, if anybody requested on September first or beyond, they're getting a notice, because that didn't get into the system.
So, people who have requested a mail-in ballot should be receiving it in the early part of October by the first October?
Yep.
Great, thanks. Sorry, Anna, sorry, you're here.
A few questions, Laura, are, do you feel, you've expressed you, you will need additional volunteers. Do we need to, could you use our assistance with recruiting more poll workers? And do you need any more financial resources to effectuate the November election?
So, I haven't pulled the exact numbers yet, my intent is to get the total number of what we've already spent for in September to Bob, because we are going to go over expense. We're going over expense because one of the postage, that's something that was not calculated into the, the cost. And then also, we spent a little bit more on feeding the volunteers than we typically do, because we had volunteers and staff that I want to say that I required, but I kind of encouraged them to work long hours without lunch breaks or, or dinner, and I kind of felt like I had to feed them. So, we spent a little bit more on that end than we typically do. So, once I have the total figures, Bob will be receiving that in the next day or two. But yes, we will need some more financial help. And as far as staffing, we had a lot of folks step up and volunteer. I didn't end up using all of them for September, but I am going to be using all of them for November. It was, one of the difficult things about this election is that typically, in a typical election, we have between eight to sixteen, in other words, one to two per precinct new staff. In this particular election, we ended up with one to two experienced people per precinct. So, it made it kind of challenging, and I, and I have to say, it was a huge help. I ended up recruiting the, she was the election official in Lowell for years. She now works for the City of Lynn. I recruited her to come down and help me with some of the troubleshooting, because of the fact that we had so many new people. I'm not so sure we would have made it through the day without her, so that was a huge help. And, you know, she said she may help out again in November. So that was a huge help. And, you know, she said she may help out again in November. So, yeah, we're probably gonna need some more help. We'll see, because I'm gonna need more people in November because the ballot count is, even though we had two elections, the ballot count's gonna be higher. Even though the ballot count's gonna be higher, it's gonna be much simpler because it's only gonna be one ballot. And there's less room for error. You know, I have to say that there was some, some issues with some folks getting the wrong ballot because of the fact that we had five ballots to deal with and we had so many different volunteers. But every, um, issue that I was made aware of was fixed. You know, so that we'll have less of that for November because it's only one ballot. But, uh, and I want to also, um, mention that, um, it it, it was a huge help wi- with and to make the election more successful and the fact that all of the residents were very patient with some of the issues that we had. And, you know, and it was very helpful to, to, for them to reach out to us and let us know what was going on and be patient while we fix the problems. I'm still finding a few issues here and there, but again, you know, we're working them out, so. Patience was, um, a huge help with with the residents.
Bob, from a budget standpoint, um, is the, will the additional resources need to come from FinCom reserves? Or is there, do we have the resources we need, um, at the ready?
I'm guessing that we'll probably ask for a budget transfer at November town meeting or possibly April town meeting if we can wait that long.
Okay.
I don't think it's so urgent, though.
Okay. I did notice in the, one of, one of the sets of command minutes that there was some kind of prioritization for out-of-state ballots. I did, I did, um, hear from one resident, um, who was concerned. Their, their college student child, um, had not received their ballot until, you know, the Friday before the election and then they'd spent, you know, money to fast-track it to get, to get back to Reading. Is that something, um, you think would, will be able to be avoided for, uh, for November, given the extra time? Or a, a change in process?
So, part of, part of the issue with the September is that we, uh, there's several issues that played into role there. One of the issues is having two elections on the same day. But the other, the main issue was the fact that we had such a short timeframe to be able to get this into place. And we literally had, you know, the, um, buckets, the mail buckets the post office uses? We literally had three of those buckets full of those cards come in. We had, we didn't have time to go through and we had to manually put them into the system and then manually mail out the ballot and manually put it into the system that the ballot had been mailed. So, and, you know, with the limited resources and and the trying to get things into place because of the pandemic, we could not go through and send out, uh, to those that are out of state first. With November, because of, because of the fact that all of those cards have already been processed, anybody that requested for the September to be mailed out is already in the system, therefore they'll be the first ones to go out. So yes, November is gonna be much better. And, you know, a little bit more organized is in the process to be able to get the out-of-state ones out, providing that they've already requested it. If they haven't, then that's something that we need to make sure that we tell them, the residents. Make sure that anybody that has a ballot that's being mailed out of state to be, to request that now. So that way we can put them into the system ahead of time and get, and those would be the first ones to go out.
For November, do ballots need to be received by eight PM on election day or do they just need to be postmarked by that date?
They need to be postmarked. And then there's a fi- I believe it's a, it's either a three or a five-day delay. I'm pretty sure it's a five-day delay. Once, as long as it's been postmarked by, eight PM on November third.
Okay.
Vanessa.
Thanks, Mark. Bob, I, I understand Laura needed a lot of volunteers, um, for the selection, especially for the, the ballot, um, envelope stuffing. Is there a way that we can redirect administrative resources for November, sort of planning ahead that, you know, we know is coming? Are there staff that can sort of help this effort as well? Relying on volunteers is always a little unpredictable.
Yeah, I'll say there's, this is, there's a clear distinction in the two sets of responsibilities that Laura just kind of mentioned in passing. One is before the election and anyone can do that, I'll say. But during the election day itself, uh, for one thing, anyone that works in the schools have to be corried. So there's a pretty hard line between the types of volunteers or the types of poll workers. We did, I mean, town hall was, was like a, uh, beehive for about two weeks. And I have to say, I was really impressed that all the kids and, um, all the adults that I saw, except for one, were wearing masks and were, despite the crowd and the activity, it was really well done from a social distancing standpoint. So Laura, I don't know if you could physically use more people than you had at the peak. There was plenty of staff working, but I'm happy to certainly offer you more. You know, we have staff that was not in the building that, for instance, could help you. So I'm sure we'll discuss this, uh, internally. We usually have a post, postmortem kind of meeting. We just haven't had that yet. And, uh, direct whatever resources she needs. The trickier part will be on election day, where there are, you know, more firm rules about who can and can't work, uh, that day. But Laura is good about letting me know what she needs.
Great, thank you, Bob.
Any other questions or comments for Laura? Go.
Oh, sorry, thanks. Uh, Laura, I, I voted in person and I, I want to thank all the volunteers and town staff, I think. Everyone did a great job. I'm sure you probably think it could have went better. But from my perspective, it was, it was pretty good. I like seeing the iPads, less papers, and I look forward to November. And I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work they did for those two weeks and beyond. Thank you.
Well, I have to say it was definitely not the most organized election I've run and, um, it's been over thirty of them. But it's also, you know, it, it, um, anybody that's been through my election training, they'll tell you that I, my number one rule is to keep the town of Reading and my name out of the paper in a negative manner. And, uh, we were successful in that, you know, so to me, that's, that's a good thing, you know? But November will definitely be a little bit more organized.
Great. Oh, and you're, you're on mute.
I was just saying, thank you so much for all your work, Laura. I'm truly above and beyond into all of the volunteers and staff. Incredible work. Thank you.
Thank you. It, it takes a team, the, um, between the town clerk staff and all of the volunteers and the kids from the National Honor Society and all of the election staff, it just, uh, yeah, I, it, it's a lot of work, but it's, um, they have a good time, too.
I hope you'll be able to take a, uh, to get some well, well-earned rest.
I'm taking next week off.
Good.
If people are, are so excited by what they've heard this evening and they want to reach out to you and volunteer, I assume the best way is either to, to call the clerk's office or to send you an email at, I assume, townclerk@ci dot reading dot ma dot us.
Yes, email is best, um, because I, I, if I have it in, in the email tonight, you're guaranteed I'm gonna read, get back to you. Sometimes voicemail gets lost.
Great. Thanks, Laura.
Thank you for the time. Um, you guys have a great night.
You as well. So it's about seven thirty-nine. Uh, Bob, I was thinking liaison reports may be pretty quick. Should we just try and buzz through that? Or do you think we should go to the, the hearing? And Caitlin, do the people, are they all waiting in the waiting room now?
Uh, yes, they are.
All right, tell you what, let's do the hearing so we can keep those folks close to one time. Let's do that first and then we'll come back to the liaison reports. So Carlo, I have, and I will project, but it's pretty small. I should just email this to you. It might be better. Oh, I think it's readable. Let me know. Hang on, I'll put it up on the screen right now. Are you able to see that or is that too small? Oh, you're on mute.
A little bigger would be helpful.
Hang on one second. Let me see if I can make that.
Is it in the packet?
Uh, no.
No, it's not.
That's the biggest I can make it.
All right, I got, I got it, I got it.
Great, thanks.
I'll do my best. All right, legal notice, Town of Reading, to inhabitants of the Town of Reading. Please take notice that the Select Board of the Town of Reading will hold a public hearing on September eighth, twenty twenty, at seven thirty PM, remotely on Zoom to act as an alteration of premises request to an annual all alcohol package license.
Excuse me for one sec, Carl, while you're doing that. Um, Caitlin, are you letting those folks in as we're speaking? Great, thanks. Sorry, Carl.
All pack, uh, all alcohol, all alcohol package license. Can't read that word.
Package store license.
Package store, uh, license for Jay and Ricky, Inc., DBA Ricky's Liquors on
Two fourteen.
One four, uh, Main Street, Reading, Mass. A copy of the proposed documents regarding this topic will be in the select board packet on the website, um, www dot reading dot ma dot gov. All interested parties are restricted to attend the hearing and may submit their comments to the meeting by email prior to four thirty PM on September eighth, twenty twenty to town manager at ci dot reading dot na dot us, per Bob Luscher, Town Manager.
Thanks, Carl. Sorry that that was. Okay, great. So I see, uh, I see, uh, oh, it, it says Ricky on, on your screen. Welcome to the meeting. But I see two of you, so one of you I'm guessing is Ricky and the other is not.
Yep, I'm Ricky, um, the younger son of Kalpish Patel, and he's, that's my dad right there. Hi.
Nice to meet you, folks. Thank you for joining.
Thank you for having us and taking the time.
Oh, sure. So in terms of activity, um, maybe I, I can kick things off. If I understand correctly, the request is to essentially, um, not have the market operating anymore. Instead, expand the size of the package store to encompass both the existing package store and the market.
That is correct, yes.
Great. Um, and I know, uh, in our packet, there's some information, a little bit from the past and some of the questions that were brought up by some previous boards. One of the questions that I had is in terms of access to the store by minors. What, um, where it was a market, I know you had minors that were coming in before. Is it your intention only to have, um, liquor in the store or are there gonna be other items as well? And, and do you have a policy in mind for minors?
Uh, JK's Market will, uh, unfortunately, after twenty-five years, be out of business. And so we'll close those doors and it'll just be the liquor store only.
Okay. And, and will you, what's your policy with minors? How, how was that, uh, other?
The same way we enforce it with liquor stores, like no one can come in under twenty-one.
Got it. Okay. And, and you post that and obviously?
Yeah, that's up on the liquor store already and that's how we'll continue to run that side as well. I mean, it would be one store, we'll take down the mail dividing wall, which we put up like about seven years ago when we created Ricky's Liquors. And so we'll just remove that wall and then make the whole property, uh, premise, a liquor store.
Got it. So there won't be any obstruction, uh, essentially. You're gonna take that wall out completely, it sounds like.
Right, that's correct. That wall is already a temporary wall that we put in ourselves. So it's not like part of the permanent structure of the building.
Got it. Great.
Yeah.
Board members' questions? Karen?
Question, um, I, I saw the previous board had questions about, um, rear and front doors and just the liquor part. And I saw where you were taking the wall out. And it looks like now you'll have two, um, two egresses, allow people to come in from the parking lot and one egress. Are you going to, in terms of managing who's going in and out of your store, gonna plan to keep both of those egresses in the front or close one?
Uh, we plan on closing the JK's Market side and just having the Ricky's Liquor side open. Most likely what we'll do is put like just shelves in front of it or something. Just like cover that entrance so that way it doesn't, you know, people don't try to enter from that side.
Okay.
It's always like, yeah, products and stuff in front of there.
Okay, this isn't my area of expertise. Do we have any, um, regulations that, you know, sort of say for this kind of a store, you can only have one, one entrance to, to make sure that people aren't sneaking in and out, minors?
That would be something when we do the construction work with the contractor. Hopefully they'll find out and we'll try to find out when we get the town permits. Especially with like how many entrances and exits we can have. But yeah, I, I will find out. I'm not sure exactly.
Yeah, just to be, just to be clear, tonight is only the alcohol license, the liquor license. You know, the building department still has to review their plans, the fire department and so on.
Right, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Other questions or comments? And, and you're muted.
I saw in the packet a, a past, uh, or at least past allegation of a violation. And I was wondering, um, what steps you've taken since I think it was twenty-fourteen to ensure that, um, minors aren't being sold to. And, um, wanted to make sure you're aware that the bull, that the Select Board updated our, our liquor licensing policy in the last year. Um, and that you're aware of changes that were made there with respect to, um, the records that, um, that, that need to be sent to the town, um, and with what frequency around tips training?
I believe it's annual, right, the tips training? And all our cashier are tip certified as well. And, uh, incident that you're referring to in twenty-fourteen, that cashier was immediately fired and we, I don't think we've had any, any compliance issues after that.
All right.
So we've passed all our compliance checks since then.
Thank you.
Other questions?
A point of clarifications, um, when we, um, discussed the liquor store over on Walkers Brook Drive, I believe where they were expanding their business, they came in and everything was designed. Bob, this is a question for you. Is this the same process the folks on Walkers Brook Drive went through or is this a different order of business where I had the impression they came in, everything was designed and approved, and we were the final step? And this, uh, as you pointed out, is an earlier step.
That's a good question. I, I've seen it done both ways, so I don't think there's a right and a wrong. It is fundamentally different just to expand the store, though, than to open a whole new one. So it might be that the whole new one, uh, makes more sense to wait for the liquor license to the end. So I, I don't think there's any, uh, any importance to the order they're going in. You know, if they had concerns about the building part of it, they probably would have done that first. But it's probably just a formality in terms of how to construct, not, not can we construct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just to, uh, clarify, the store was one store before. JK's Market was on both sides. And then we divided. So we don't think there should be any issues making it into one store once again.
My fellow board members can correct me if I'm misremembering, but some of our new policy around, around liquor, our liquor licenses, um, and with respect to tips training, is, it's, I think if you have new employees coming on, you need to provide information with respect to tips training. With, you can't just wait until the next year to do so. People need to, anyone who's working in the store needs to be tips tips certified. There's not a grace period, um, bef- to, to get them on board and they have to, they need to be, um, trained when they come on. Um, my fellow.
Prior to, yeah.
Yeah. Prior to, yeah.
Yep.
So that's, I think that's new. Um, so just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that.
Yeah, and for our expansion, we don't like have any necessarily new employment that we need because, in fact, we'll probably reduce some payroll because we're getting rid of the one store. So now we only need like one cashier. So, yeah, everyone who's working there from day one will be ti- tip certified.
Great.
Excellent. You, you're probably detecting from this board, um, a lot of interest and concern, specifically as it relates to not serving minors.
Understandable. Very understandable.
Making sure that. We, we did go through, as Ann mentioned, um, a lot of discussion and changed the policies. But it's, this board's very strong feeling that that's paramount in what's going on here. It's, it's absolutely critical. And we, we ask that you, we do more than ask, we require that you are extremely compliant.
Yep.
And we want to make sure that everyone is on the same. And we want to make sure that everyone is on the same page, that, that you folks understand it as we do, that this is a very high priority for this community.
Yeah, and we try our best to, you know, uphold that.
Great. Any other questions, comments? No, okay, let me, I think I've got a motion. Just one second to find it. This one is going to be much larger. Carlo, can I ask you to read the first one here, please?
Yes.
Uh, we can make it approve and not deny, I guess.
Okay. Moved that the board approved the alteration of premises application for an annual all alcohol package store license for Ricky's Liquor at two fourteen Main Street, Reading, Mass.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vanessa. Any further discussion by the board? Not appearing. I'm going to call out as I, I see you on my screen. Carlo?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yeah.
And Mark, yes. So we are five zero. Thank you, folks, very much. We, uh, we wish you, uh, very good luck. And, um, yeah, I appreciate your, your being a, a business here in Reading.
Hopefully we'll have twenty five more years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Yep.
Best of luck.
Okay, let's come back to talk about liaison reports. Um, Carlo, can I start with you? Any, any reports to, to mention?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so since, I don't know, several weeks ago, I guess. So the, on the Historic Commission, the last meeting, they were, uh, attempting to get into the library, into their archives to look for some photos, um, because they're going to wrap the utility boxes. Uh, those aren't going to be painted unless something is, is going to change. Um, as many have seen in town, um, we have a lot of great new colorful utility boxes in town. And some were reserved for the, um, Historic Commission. So, um, hopefully they got in by now and, and they wanted to gather some photos, um, so those can be superimposed, uh, wrapped, uh, on utility boxes. And CPDC, uh, their last meeting and the meeting again tomorrow night, I don't know the full agenda, but the last meeting, uh, was primarily geared towards the Chronicle Building on Main Street, on the sides and scope of it. And, um, they went over the plans and how many units and the, um, the fancy new parking system underground, that lift system, uh, city lift system. So CPDC asked them to come back and to see if they could reduce the footprint or reduce the size of the building. They were very concerned, uh, the way it's going to sit on Main Street. And Recreation Committee, um, discussed, um, allowing some members of the Rec Committee through the pickleball community to have temporary lights installed at Memorial Park. And I believe that it will eventually come before us. Uh, they elected to stay, extend their season, uh, in play, uh, at Memorial Park, which is already lined for pickleball. And so they're going to propose that at the Recreation Meeting this week, Rec Committee meeting this week. And I believe unless something changes, it's going to come before us, uh, to vote to approve the temporary lights that will be locked up um, and given a code and, uh, unless I guess something else changes, uh, those lights will be welcome to the tennis community as well, on behalf of the pickleball community, because we'll have to raise some funds, uh, to pay for the lights. And that's it.
Great. Thanks, Carl. Anne? Oops, still on mute.
Uh, Josh Goldbus, the Chair of H Trac, asked me to convey that H Trac is, uh, planning a Zoom listening event with Senator Lewis, Representative Hackerty and Re- Representative Jones, um, hopefully for some time in September. Um, Carlo, feel free to share, um, and, and, uh, contribute anything additional on to what I'm about to say, but the Ad hoc Committee, um, has continued to meet and will be meeting as soon as next week, although we have a little bit of scheduling confusion to iron out. Um, jointly with the Library Board of Trustees, um, I think the last update we had provided to the Select Board was that, um, when I had brought the proposal of the Ad hoc Committee to the Library Board of Trustees, they had asked us to go back to the Ad hoc Committee to flesh out the proposal and to respond to questions that they raised, as well as questions that residents had raised. So the Ad hoc Committee has been meeting over a, a set of meetings since June, um, to fine tune the proposal. And to come up with a set of frequently asked questions, um, that are responsive to both the Board of Library Trustees' questions and resident concerns. Um, so we've, we've worked on that and are, are preparing to go to, back to the Library Board of Trustees with that proposal. Um, what I think has been really helpful, at least for me, is we've been, um, bringing Amy Lannan, our library director, in on the conversation, and she attended our last Ad hoc Committee meeting, um, to provide feedback. Um, it, the several, um, members and advisors of the committee have also worked on developing a draft, um, job description for the director position that is envisioned under the proposal. Um, Carrie Perry, um, uh, Pat Calley and Andrew Grimes drafted, um, a draft job description. Now, that would not be something final that would go before the Library Board. We would, we would present that to them, but, um, assuming they take on our, uh, the Ad hoc Committee's proposal as their own, um, that, that job description would have to go, um, and be developed further by library staff in conjunction with human resources, but it's a starting point for them. Uh, Carlo, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add. Um, Carlo's been a, a great partner, as has Bob, um, in bringing, um, this proposal forward and, and fine tuning it. And I appreciate, uh, both of your efforts in this regard.
No, thanks, Anne. I think that was well said. Uh, the meetings were pretty productive. And, uh, the, the attendees and the volunteers and the Ad hoc Committee, I think, have been, uh, well represented. And, uh, it, it should go forward and Amy will, you know, kind of i- intends to make it part of the strategic plan uh, for the library. So that will, that will take up some more time that was maybe anticipated. Um, so it'll be a good presentation to the town meeting, and I think, uh, so far it's going well. Thanks.
Oh, and that, that reminds me, um, thank you, Carlo, that I think the last time we discussed this with, with the Select Board, we were envisioning, um, it coming before November town meeting for a vote, a vote as, um, an adjustment to this year's budget. Now we're envisioning, based on, um, the realities of bu- both budgeting, uh, and the library strategic plan, that it makes sense to bring it before April town meeting as part of the library's budget. Um, and that's based on guidance that, um, Bob and Amy have provided.
Thank you. That's it? Great. Okay, Karen.
Oh, hi. Quick update. Um, so I also attended the CPDC discussion, um, regarding the new building at five thirteen Main. And then subsequent to that meeting, the developer reached out to me. I had mentioned that we were spending a lot of our meetings talking about, you know, green communities, what we can do to green up Reading. Um, and, um, so we were able to set up a meeting with, uh, reached out to John Sempeck on the R M L D Board of Commissioners. And he reached out to Colleen and she and Chuck Underhill were able to get on a Zoom call with myself and the developer to talk about, as Carlo mentioned, they're talking about some pretty innovative technology, the city lift. Um, and they were very interested to hear about alternatives to natural gas in the building, demand for that, how to incorporate electronic, uh, E V vehicles. Um, so City Lift has some E V options. They're quite cost prohibitive. And it was a great meeting. Colleen and Chuck were, um, very willing to work with the developer to help them move their concept forward. It's, it's, at this point, it's all on paper. And so there, he mentioned, the developer mentioned, there were some factors with the gas configuration at that site, that this actually might be an excellent building to talk about more, um, electrification. And, um, it is going to be smaller than the stretch code commercial limits that we'll, that we've been looking at. So it wouldn't necessarily fall under stretch code, but, you know, given what he's got to get done, he's very, I, I was very excited to hear that he's willing and open to newer technologies and electrification and, and doing what he can to help Reading, um, achieve our goals, um, of being greener.
Awesome. Thanks, Karen. Vanessa?
Um, I have a general question, less of a report. Uh, are we going to discuss, uh, this evening, the cell tower? Um, we've obviously received quite a number of messages from residents. I've spoken to some of them. Um, are we going to discuss that at a later time, today, tonight, Mark?
Um, we need to. Um, and yeah, I think that, um, I kind of jumped over it in my, my early thoughts. Um, why don't we, if we could, let's finish liaison reports. Let's go to public comment and then we can come back.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mark.
Um, couple of reports from, from my side. Um, I attended the audit committee meetings. I think I already talked about the R M L D. I went to the town audit, uh, as well. Um, as usual, Sharon and staff did a great job. Um, all the materials are there. Um, it looks good. Uh, we spent a lot of time talking to the auditors about best practices and, and making sure that, um, we kind of poke at an area each year where there could be some areas that are unclear. Sometimes where cash balances accumulate, things like that. Anyway, they're, they're, they're working on that activity. Um, we asked them to think a lot about, to give us advice where they can related to COVID reimbursements. They obviously can't guide us as to what we should do, but they can, uh, help us and when we have questions about, hey, does this one, uh, comply? So, um, good audit, um, and finished the, the committee met for that. Um, I was at with the Trust Fund Commissioners also. They're doing some really good things, supporting elderly residents with some of the, the hospital funds. Um, they have been given permission to, to do some things. They're helping with some medical appointments. Um, while we haven't had the van available, um, they've worked on a structure to get, uh, elderly resident, as residents into a cab, uh, for some medical appointments. Hopefully the van will be able to, to come back, but we'll see. Uh, but I was very impressed with kind of how they go through it and what they're doing and, um, kind of how they, they, uh, use the fund. So, so, uh, kudos to Endri for that. Um, the other activity, and, and here's where I'll bring it in, Vanessa, if it's all right, is I held an office hour on Friday, um, which was great. It was the all time highest turnout I've ever had for an office hour. I had fourteen people attend. A Zoom call. Mostly came in, um, by video, um, but a few came in just by phone. Um, and I think it worked well. I think everyone that wanted to speak was able to speak. The vast majority focused on the cell tower, uh, discussion, um, and kind of where things are. And asking, there are some specific questions they asked, which I will, I'll send, um, a memo, Bob, to you with some of the questions they asked there, um, beyond some of the things that I've seen in the notes so far. Um, but they're obviously very interested in, in the situation and in the board taking a look at that. Um, we talked a little bit about when would be an opportunity to have a public discussion um, after staff has had some time to kind of look further into the issue and see what some of the options are. So staff is, is planning to, to do that. And then we talked about, um, our October twentieth meeting as an opportunity to have a public meeting aspect to it also. And I think we would probably want to anticipate many residents, uh, that would like to speak at that meeting. Um, and, and the thought here was that if we have some staff feedback first, that can be, um, more helpful to the process in terms of what some possible steps are from there, as opposed to, um, getting more input in advance of looking at what some of the options are. So my, my thought would be to put that onto the agenda of October twenty. So if that, no problems, if folks don't have an issue with that, that's my suggestion in terms of going forward. And that will be, um, very publicly noticed, um, including, we're developing a list, obviously, of folks that are, are interested, not just the Butters, but others that are interested as well.
Mark?
Carl?
I, I have a question or maybe a comment, uh, for all the neighbors, because we did receive quite a few emails with their concerns, which are, uh, you know, I would be concerned as well, uh, that was in that neighborhood. Is there any way to ask that neighborhood to maybe have a representative? Because if we have thirty people saying the same exact thing, it might be helpful if they can gather each other's emails, because they all, you know, every email, a lot of it was a copy and paste email sharing the same concerns. Uh, some were brief, some were extensive, some included data on the frequencies and, you know, and, 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 you know, I, I read them all and responded to them all, and I fielded some calls. I'm sure other board members did as well. But I think it'd be very helpful if we had, uh, maybe no more than two representatives, if there's two different aspects they want to cover to speak on behalf of either a street or the entire neighborhood. I think that would be helpful for the board, but that's just my opinion.
Um, if the board would like, I'd be happy to reach out, um, to, to some of the folks that I, I spoke with. Um, they have requested that if board members would like to, um, take a look and, and visit with, with some of the residents socially distanced, of course, that they would, um, very much like for that to happen.
Um, but I would be happy to. Earlier today, and it was, I, it was worthwhile, I thought.
Great, great. Um, i- if the board would like, I'm happy to, to reach out and, and ask, um, if they might organize uh, into a, a smaller than, than thirty people, uh, that would like to speak.
We could certainly encourage that, but I think we allow anyone to speak who, who wants to.
That sounds exactly right.
Yeah, Mark.
Oh, sorry, Vanessa. I, I wasn't trying to discourage anyone by any means.
Right.
I, I think, uh, uh, if we all read the emails, they were pretty, uh, pretty much the same.
Yeah, so I, I will say that, um, in the, in the fourteen people I spoke with, you know, most of them were about the cell tower. They did bring up some very specific questions that I think are, are, are going to be helpful for the staff to, to be able to look at. Uh, you know, questions like, you know, why do we have a fire talent? Excuse me, why do we have a, a water talent? I, I kind of put the two together. But, you know, y- you know, it would be good just to be able to answer programs, so they understand what's going on and why, and the process that already, um, has taken place and what options there are.
Mark, I will say to, just to echo Carlo, um, that had been my idea as well, to have a representative from the neighborhood or two. This has gone over very well with other neighborhoods when they are facing issues. Um, I would also encourage them to, i- if you're watching, hello, um, thank you for the emails. I, I would encourage you to, um, make a list of the top three or five or ten concerns, whatever, whatever the neighborhood has, um, that you'd like the town to be aware of, um, and the board to be aware of, um, so that we can help address and mitigate what those might be. Um, and also so the staff can come prepared for, uh, or to answer those types of questions. So of course, everyone is welcome to talk to us individually, uh, but this does certainly help with the organization and with the town's ability to respond to your concern.
Great. I, I would just say, kind of in, in closing on this topic, on the office hour topic, um, I thought it was great. It was really good, and it was a chance to talk one-on-one with people. It, the, the format seemed to work very well to me, so I, I would encourage other board members to, let's schedule times to, to do it going forward. I did one during the day. You know, I'm sure we can, you know, we used to do it just before meetings at night. I think, you know, different options are great. Um, and again, Zoom and telephone work great, so. Cool. Um, okay, so that's it on liaison. Let's go to public comment. So I know.
Bob had a comment. Mark, Bob had a comment.
All right, thank you. Bob, you're on mute, though.
Thank you. If I might just share my screen, I just have two quick things under the town manager's, uh, report.
Oh, sorry. My apologies.
Oh, not at all. Um, hopefully you can see the town's website. Um, one is a micro, uh, micro enterprise business grant, and thank you to one of the members that's already shared this on social media. Um, Reading has two hundred and ten thousand dollars of grant funds available to micro businesses. Uh, the deadline is late September, so this is something that the small businesses, uh, should get to. Um, you know, this is a potentially tremendous boost for a small business, you know, a three or four person business, uh, to get a grant as much as ten thousand dollars. So I'd encourage folks to look this over and congratulate, uh, Aaron and staff, just being one of the twenty-three municipalities that, that got this. Um, second thing and, and part of, uh, a big part of your agenda next, uh, meeting. Um, this is the downtown parking information sessions. The board knows about them, but just so the public knows. Um, again, it's on the website. Again, it's on the website. There's a list of detailed, these are the remaining future ones, starting on the 15th. Lots of public information sessions. When Julie is, you know, in front of you in two weeks, she'll certainly describe some of the things she's heard and learned. And in my cover memo for this week, you've already seen some of the changes we've made based on these meetings. So the turnout has been really quite good under the circumstances and the feedback's been very helpful for staff. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Rob. Just to reiterate two things there. One, on the the parking, we have a public hearing at our next meeting. That's that's publicly posted. So in addition to the opportunities to speak directly with Julie and to interact with those groups, there will be a public hearing as well. And second, on the micro grants, kudos again to Aaron. That's great. The process for businesses, number one is, I guess they should look at the website, see if they might be able to apply. And if they have any questions, they can reach out to Aaron. Is that kind of the best approach?
Yeah, there's two contacts listed on the website. Aaron is one and the state is another. So either one.
Great. Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to public comment. So is is Ralph the only person? Great.
Yes, and he's there.
Denise McCarthy is there. I'm not sure if she's there for public comment. And David Zeke is presumably for the climate.
Denise is for climate, too.
He is, okay.
I'll let Ralph in.
Please.
Hello, Ralph. We can hear you and we see what says Ralph's iPad.
Well, I'm here. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Please, we're all ears.
The last meeting we had, these people were going to do some additional investigation behind the scenes, whatever you were going to be doing, and the report back on told me to come back on this particular meeting. I could just give you an update that Monday and Tuesday this week, Maya Tree did show and we removed the tree that were in question. And we were surprised also to see a couple of these things, even way up at the very, very top of these things were were significant issue on it. So I'm just waiting. I've given you all the information I have. Basically, just going back over to the obverse report that Mike Canner, the town manager, you know, town tree warden gave out, and the five trees that you people were talking about, all five of those trees, Mike rated a four out of five as being dangerous. The three deciduous trees, he rated number twos on this thing, which we wound up trimming. But the other five that were monstrous fine, and I think you were you were out and saw what we were looking at, were all rated a four out of a five. And that's, that's not a one and two. That's not a healthy tree. That's an issue. And you saw the one that uprooted and that's, that's basically what I was doing. I was trying to protect not only my property, but also the well being of the people who inhabit this particular home. So so I'm just wondering what the town is is decided to do on this. I'm still looking for restitution to help me out with the particular bill. They were dangerous trees from the town. They're on town property. Even the conservation committee gave permission to remove them, and the conservation would never give permission to remove any healthy trees whatsoever. So I'm just, I'm looking for, I'm looking for some help, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Ralph. I don't know that we have specific feedback for you at this point, other than there is not a policy in place to address trees on public land that abut to private property. And I think that that probably is something we should explore and ask staff to come back with recommendations on it, how do other members feel?
Was that not the direction you were going to be doing on the last particular meeting, sir?
It was to see if there was any history of having done this, and I'm not aware that there is. And there is not, I don't believe that there is a policy related to this that exists. And I think what what the board needs to do is decide if we want to create such a policy, ask staff to create such a policy, if that makes sense, what's the right thing to do. But we you know, we can't just kind of kick the can down the road. We should make a decision on how to handle this.
Again, I know this is unprecedented area, you know, territory, to be perfectly honest with you. And, you know, again, I wouldn't even be pursuing this thing if it was on my property. That's a moot issue. But they were trees. You saw them, a couple of other people saw them. And if there's not a significant policy in place to to address that type of things, where does one go as a taxpayer in the town here, sir?
I know that there was some accommodation that was offered and that that that's not what the direction you wanted to to go. So I think that we need to either decide that there should be a policy on this or that it's something that we we really can't address. I think we also wanted to get a little feedback from town council. I'm not sure that we were able to, town council specific, too, does the select board have jurisdiction here?
Did you get that information from council?
I'm not aware that that was an issue. I certainly can bring it to town council. I know there was a question as to what's conservation's jurisdiction, perhaps versus the select board. I can certainly ask.
Yeah, I think this could represent a substantial issue because we have plenty of property that abuts to public land. And we probably need to come up with some some standard policy for for what we're going to do about it. So I don't think we can give you a direct answer here, Ralph. I think we need to kind of figure out how to proceed, get some answers, and then decide how to proceed, asking staff for suggestions on how to handle something like this.
I think we need, would need to add this to a future agenda.
Right. So let's let's plan to do that. Let's put it on a future agenda for, have a specific discussion. We'll take specific action for next step. So Ralph, sorry, it's not something we can resolve here and now for you, but what we can do is is get it on to an agenda with specific action to take place from there.
An agenda being what, between now and the next meeting or it's just open ended, sir?
So we need to put it on an agenda. I just can't promise you which agenda yet. But soon, I I know that next meeting is going to be quite full, so my expectation would be October.
Wow. Now, you've mentioned you've gone to council on this. I have not gone to.
Rob, I'm going to cut you off there. We allow for kind of two minutes. Usually, we're, we don't engage back and forth other than an agenda item. But we have here, I think that we we need to address it more formally. So and and I don't mean legal by formal, but formal meaning, put it onto our agenda and discuss it.
So where do I stand from here? What if, what follow up or what do I do? Do I just wait? And do you folks let me know what's going on or invite me to another meeting or what, sir?
Karen, you have a comment?
Just a point of clarification. I thought we already had an agenda item for this particular item. So I don't, I certainly, we are very busy, so we can't keep talking about the same stuff over again, but we can probably figure it offline. But I I just point a clarification. I thought we already had this as a specific agenda item.
Yeah, so we did it the last meeting.
Okay. No, all right. I remember correctly.
We didn't close it.
Yeah, before, if someone did just get back to me off, off after this is done and just let me know what's going to be happening, I'll definitely bow out of this, let your people take care of what else they're doing.
Fair enough. We'll do that.
Okay.
Thanks, Ralph.
Your time, everyone. I appreciate it. Please, everyone be safe. I don't know how to get out of this particular meeting, Chairman, so I'm going to shut off my computer.
Oh, I think Caitlin can can escort you off gently. All right, next on our agenda, sustainability and master plan. So could we, let's invite in David and Denise. Hi, Denise.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, David. Oh, sorry. You moved to a different position. There you go. Welcome. Sorry, we're just behind.
Good. Good. David's in here yet? No?
David is here.
I am here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. So the floor is yours. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I found it very enlightening in terms of some of the activities, but probably would make sense, please, you know, some highlights in terms of the plan where you're headed. And as you know, we have the stretch code as a, an item that's next on our discussion for this. So let me hand it over to you folks.
Do you have the presentation or do you want me to run it or what?
We all have it. Are there slides that you want to pull from there?
Well, I'm just going to, if I can share my screen, let me just, I can show them that way. Do you want me to do that?
Please.
Can I do that?
Yes.
Hang on. Make sure I'm in the right spot here.
David, I can share the screen if you prefer quite easily.
No, I got that. Thanks. But I I just was not in the right place here. I think. How's that?
If you can make it as big as you possibly can, that will be appreciated.
It's as big as I possibly can. Is that working?
Good for me.
We get that logo on the website. I love that. Who did that logo?
Look at the date on that logo, 2006.
Us did that, right?
Yeah. So, so what I want to talk to you about was was the sustainability plan that the Climate Advisory Committee has been working on. And I spent a couple of minutes just talking about how we got to it and then some of the highlights of it and how it fits. I won't go through the committee again, but we did go through this. The membership has not changed since I talked to you the last time. So I wanted to point out that there are a number of plans that the Climate Advisory Committee has participated in or generated dating back several years. And these are among the starting points for us. This this exercise that we we did this time around was was a very much a bottoms up exercise where we looked at dozens, if not hundreds, of of a very, of specific tasks, ideas, recommendations, and many of them were pulled from from some of these plans. The problem that we had with these plans was that because they were very specific plans with with actions and due dates and so forth, they were all well accepted, but but many of the actions, most of the actions were never, never even started, let alone accomplished. So what we wanted to do was do, was to take this and to push it up a level. So what you're going to see is some is some summaries of of information. So I'm going to talk to you about buildings, transportation, food and health. These were just, these are just categories that that we that we collected information into. So we started, we did analysis of all these low level items, looked at the costs and the benefits of doing each one, but then summarized it into some high level goals. What we want to see happen is that Reading adopts some high level sustainability goals that can be incorporated into our master plan and that guide decisions as we make them. So even things that without, without getting very specific in the beginning, if we lay out some 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 general goals, we want to include goals, even if we are not going to pursue them actively in the near term, because they will be there then as a as part of our thinking, so that when the decision is to make a decision or evaluate an option or consider a proposal, that we will be able to use these for that purpose. So that's, that's where this is coming from. So what you can see are some fairly high level ideas with with a few, a few areas where I dip down into some specifics. But the the thought is that we would develop a shared understanding of where we want to go. So I'm going to talk about those four categories. The first one being buildings. And this is, we're talking about public buildings and private buildings. In the area of public buildings, so so buildings are critical, maybe the most important thing for a sustainability plan because improving sustainability in buildings requires a very long view. And choices that we make for our buildings get baked in for years and and sometimes decades. So we proposed adopting clean energy goals for Reading. That means moving our public buildings away from fossil fuels to renewable energy or other, you know, non, non fossil, non emitting forms of energy. And that includes things like clean energy improvements, when we consider new heating systems or that we should entertain adding solar energy or energy efficiency, that we should have goals and plans for all of those things. That we should become a green community and tap into the funding that's available, brought through that. That we should consider the risks to our buildings in our municipal vulnerability preparedness plan. A big part of this is is that we need to adopt a holistic thinking. I mean, green community, MVP, or other goals should be one thought. And we want to, we want to talk about how green community fits into what we're, what we're trying to do or how our MVP MVP plans reflect what we want to do. And and there will be other programs, I'm sure, that that crop up that we want to be able to to include in this, in this holistic picture. So we're we're also considering, you know, climate change as we go. So think of of public buildings in in the sense of MVP. Think of, think of public buildings as a community resource, like with with providing maybe refrigerators or sources of electricity for for residents to charge their, their, you know, devices and so forth. If if we really get into problems with, you know, with electricity loss from climate. Similarly, in private buildings, this is where we we support adopting the stretch energy code. That's now up to 284 towns have adopted the special energy code as of August 25th. We, and Reading should should be one of the, one of the next. We encourage fuel switching from fossil fuels to electricity for the same kind of reasons that I've been mentioning that. And we can do this by, in part, creating a list of green builders. Who knows how to, who knows how to build these kinds of buildings? And let's tell our our residents about them, that they know they exist. And and let's join the the Mass CEC Heat Smart Program for heat pumps. Now, some of these things have to be done in conjunction with RMLD. That's fine. You know, I I think there again, it's the holistic view that that matters to us. Also want to, of course, encourage homeowners to, and our, our commercial owners to adopt clean energy solutions and energy efficiency, have home energy audits, have a Reading-driven awareness programs on energy efficiency and conservation. We suggest adopting the CPACE program, the Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy capability to fund, you know, clean energy improvements in our commercial, you know, buildings. So the next category is transportation. So the buildings and the transportation, I think, are the most urgent. And they also are tied to a number of the things that we're doing. You know, the green communities says that we would have, if we wanted, if we wanted to become a green community, we would have to adopt a plan to switch to more fuel efficient vehicles. But we think that we think the right solution here is for Reading to embrace electric vehicles. And we should encourage a conversion of our of our fleet to electric vehicles to the extent that we can over time. So when transition fleet, we also want to provide and encourage ample electrical vehicle, electric vehicle charging stations. So this means, for example, adding electric vehicle charging stations to our town parking lots or modifying our building codes so that when a new parking lot is built within the town, that it includes electric vehicle charging stations or modifying our building codes so that new construction of commercial or residential properties that include at least 10 parking spots also have electric vehicle charging stations. So this becomes, you know, this becomes a change to our building code, a little, it goes beyond what the. a change to our building code, a little, it goes beyond what the, what the stretch energy code would, would necessarily make us do. Then we want also just more parking and bicycle options in Reading. Want to see what the diet, the road diet's gonna take us. We realize that's going on for a while, but, but the goals of the road diet, whether we end up embracing that or not, are, are goals that, that make sense for us. And I mean, reductions of accidents, you know, more pedestrian, safer for pedestrians and more places to have bicycles and, and walking lanes and so forth. So, I think that's, those are all important. And this ties also when we talk about charging stations, for example, we're tying the, this thought back to the electrification of buildings idea. So, these things go together again, trying to have a holistic picture. Move on from that to talking about food. So, here's, here's a case where we, we want to see local sourcing of food that we're, wherever we can. It decreases the transportation and, you know, emissions costs of providing food. It increases the security of the supply of food that we, if we, if we emphasize local produce and local food. And so, one of the thoughts here was, was supporting farmers markets. Now, this is a, where there are farmers markets in our areas and we would first recommend that these be supported and, and encouraged and advertised. Maybe eventually Reading should have its own farmer's market. Whether, you know, however long that takes, this, you know, we, we should still be pushing the farmer's markets that are in our area because they also provide local food. Another idea is, is establishing community gardens, you know, and where, where residents could, could have, they could have their little garden spot. I mean, it's a good teaching vehicle. It's also just an opportunity for people to, to, again, provide their own food locally and, and it's, it's lovely, you know, share it in a procuring local food for schools and towns and town events. This is just, I, this is mostly, again, it's all the reasons I mentioned, but it's also for just some participation. You know, people, you know, let, let our residents get involved in, in dealing with the supplying of food as opposed to just shipping it all in. So, this is, this may be one of the areas that we're not gonna jump on right away because we're worrying about green communities or something. But this, but, but by having these kind of ideas in a, in a master plan, when it comes up, we would have already thought about it. We would have a reason to go one way or another. We would have a reason to work for farmer's market or a community garden if we could come to some kind of agreement as a town. And last, certainly not the east, health. We need to, this, this ties to the municipal vulnerability preparing this program again. We need to plan for more severe weather events. The, the experience that Connecticut had in, in East Ayes, the, the experience that Louisiana had in Hurricane Laura, the experience that California is having with the wildfires is that the disaster events are just mega size, you know, that, that they're getting, it's, it's not just that we have a storm and that we lose electricity. We're having a storm that's taking out a whole region and is, and we're losing electricity for weeks. You know, or, or towns are being endangered. I think we need to think in those terms in Reading. We need to think of what, what, what would a real disaster look like? What would we do for our population? What kind of emergency procedures? I never even switched that. I never even, what kind of emergency procedures would we have for vulnerable populations? And, and maybe we even have some, you know, some sort of simulations or some sort of practice event of how we would deal with it. I think our municipal buildings, again, all the way back to buildings, these become a critical resource, not just for shelters, but not just for shelters, but it's something that might have to sustain people, a place for them to put their medicines or whatever, you know, over, over a very long period of time. And I think we need to expect that, that our weather disasters are gonna be more disastrous in the future. And then, so creating a community facilities for use by the residents. Again, this, this comes full circle back to our, to plants, our buildings. And, and I think this is another area where it should be, and it should be in our long-term thinking. We may not have any programs on it right away. Maybe, maybe we do because of the MVP. But that's, you know, that's, that's just another part of, of a master plan. So, this is what I hope the select board will embrace, that is part of a, is part of a big picture and adopt ideas at this level. And then as we, as we dive into them, as we dive into, you know, a, a program to adopt, to become a green community or, or to decide what we actually want to propose for maybe for a program for MVP, those kind of things. These, these kind of high level goals will guide us. And, and so that's our recommendation. So, I'll leave it there.
Thanks, David. Board members, questions?
David, I just want to thank you. I think it's phenomenal. I loved the, the presentation and the deck and the summary you gave here. You know, your timing is really perfect in coming to talk to us because we're actually in the process of discussing the town manager goals. And some of the things I had flagged were sustainability, vehicles, buildings, et cetera, and setting timelines for, for when we can expect plans to be developed of that nature. So, you've done a tremendous amount of legwork. This is so just timely. So, thank you. I'm actually gonna be incorporating some of your comments into my goals now. So, thank you very much for that. I'm, I'm excited and you have my full support.
Well, thank you. Questions, comments, other board members? Anne?
I, I have a process question and a sort of jurisdiction question. So, who would be creating such a master plan and who would be adopting such a master plan?
Well, I mean, Reading has plans, has economic development plans, you know, obviously, you know, I know you all are considering things like parking plans and so forth. These are all, these are all big picture plans. I mean, I mean, we think of it in pieces. Are we, are we evaluated in pieces? But I guess I, I put all that together and, and describe that as a master plan. I don't know that there is a master plan document per se.
Okay. So, it's not, it's not sort of be an official term?
Not, not that I know of. No. I mean, we could make it that if it, if it helped, but I, but I just, I, I propose that more as a concept that, that we don't, whether we do, when we talk about our economic development, we also talk, talk about sustainability, you know, when we talk about, you know, any major changes in the town or where we want to go or where we want to be in 10 years, 20 years, there that, that this is another dimension and it's an important dimension. It's another set of criteria that we would, that we would include. And, and I think that's, it's, it makes it easier to describe and defend whatever it is that we, that we want to end up doing. You know, it just, if they all, if everything fits together, at least it's, it's so that in, in the, in the, if the puzzle pieces fit, then, then we can see the picture, right?
So, so how do we do this? Or who's, who's responsible? I guess the select board ultimately may be, but who creates these plans? What documents are they incorporated into who adopts them, et cetera?
Looks like Vanessa has the answer.
So, do you wanna addressing that?
This is, um, so there's many people and many groups and committees that have authority over this. When it comes to certain things like buildings and transportation, that falls under the town manager. So, that falls to the select board. When we talk about zoning and buildings and requirements, we now are talking about bylaw. We're talking about CPDC. So, you know, David has, and the Climate Advisory Committee have very nicely put this together into a package, but I think more broadly speaking, it's a philosophy in how we approach future developments in town and future expenses. When we talk about HVAC systems, for example. So, it's, it's not a one-stop shop where we can say, you know, X person has authority. I think this is really a collaborative effort between all of these different groups. School committee is another one that could weigh in here. RMLD are the obvious ones. So, I would say if, if this is the direction that we want to go in, and I certainly hope it is, then I think it would be prudent to have a much larger meeting to incorporate all of the stakeholders in this. To incorporate all the stakeholders on this.
Cut out for a moment and I missed some of what you said, Vanessa. My apologies. But I'm hearing joint ownership, multiple stakeholders.
Yes. So, I think it would be prudent to have a broader meeting with CPDC. You know, we include the library if we think that, that they're partners in this as well. The schools. I think SNCOM obviously plays a part, obviously the town staff. I know I left some, obviously Climate Advisory, CPDC. So, a, a sort of a joint meeting to say, is this direction we want to go in? The term master plan has a state definition that is very specific.
Right.
And so, you know, if we, I've raised the issue a couple of times now of updating the master plan. It's done by staff. It's very labor intensive. So, perhaps we can label it something else so that we don't go sort of to that extent, if that's not the direction we want to go in. But I, I think we need to partner with our colleagues to make this happen. Otherwise, everyone's sort of operating independently and there may, we may miss something or opportunities that would otherwise be available.
And similarly, where the master, the concept of master plan is, I think, a state concept for municipalities. The bill, the building code is a statewide code, I believe. And of course, we have our own individual community municipal bylaws. But that, that's my understanding and someone can correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct. And the stretch code is an example of that in terms of it being specific to, to a bylaw, a town bylaw. Karen?
Anne, I'm glad you asked that question. As a liaison to the Climate Advisory Committee, you know, I appreciate how quickly they turn this around. And then the question is, so what can we do with it in our community's master plan? None of this is covered. Under sustainability, it says thou shalt recycle. So, but if this is something we want to do and I, I think there's a lot of support for in the community, how do we get it out there? How do we get, whether, I, I had thoughts about whether this needs to be presented at town meeting. Given more prominence on our website, if you go and look at the Town of Winchester, sustainability is one of the first things you see. It's front and center. So, yeah, I've been struggling with not codifying this, but, but at the same time, taking steps to implement some of this.
I, I should clarify, I do like what, what I'm hearing. I'm just sort of curious about concrete action steps to how to effectuate the, the very well-received ideas you've presented. So.
Good. Sorry.
Um, thanks. You know, I, I think Vanessa has a really nice summary of this. I'd like to sit down probably with David, maybe with the committee, but I know David and I work well and understand some of the comments he's made about your past plans and, and maybe something that hasn't been implemented because the Climate Advisory Committee has put together past plans and some of it did require town changes. And as far as I know, we made a lot of changes. And I don't mean to suggest the changes from 10 years ago are sufficient. But I think before you gather a lot of people, probably a helpful exercise, when I meet with David is to make sure that all of you have an inventory about what does exist. Maybe it's called a different thing. Maybe it's tucked in a corner somewhere. But for instance, when David was describing the emergency planning, as Mark knows, we have a lot of those. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, before you gather a lot of people together, that there's a good foundation built as to what's needed and what's there and what needs to change.
It's an excellent point. So, but it can take a different flavor, whereas before we would have just installed another gas line to be our municipal vulnerability backup system. And now we can take a broader approach. What other kind of backup systems can we have? Can these community centers, like David's specific example, if we need, if the climate is getting hotter and we need residents to go to, say, the senior center or someplace that is cool and store medications? So, part of a, an MVP plan for that could be, how do we make that plan greener? How do we not keep relying on fossil fuels to achieve some of these things? So, no question. I know you've been doing a lot of emergency planning.
Yeah, it's, it's a really interesting approach that he's describing almost like when we prepare for a specific weather-related emergency, that we're more broadly prepared. So, not just let's open the senior center for a cooling center, but let's have that ability longer term. And so, for instance, there's some municipal buildings that should have generators that don't because for a one-day or two-day event, it's okay. We don't need them. But for a longer planning like this, we should think differently. So, yeah, I, I think there's some thinking that needs to go into this and we should be able to come up with some suggestions.
David, how?
And a bigger meeting, I think, would be an excellent idea.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. It, it feels like RMLD would be a very natural partner in a lot of the things we're, we're talking about, particularly on, certainly in, in preparedness and things like that, maybe less on food, but you know, I'm wondering, have they already been engaged with you? Do they have a liaison that's working with you? I'm just wondering kind of where, where are things already? I, I take Bob's, Vanessa's point, Bob's point is spot on. It's great. And that's the way I think to kind of build this, figure out what we need and then start kind of broadening people. Like, you know, the way we have financial forums, maybe there's a sustainability forum at some point that takes place. Because I think you'll find there are a lot of different pieces that touch this, just as you laid out. But it feels like RMLD could be playing a big role here. And it certainly fits, if it's their mission, if it's everything. Have, have they been engaged already? Or is that something that, that we should talk about working on as well?
Well, they, that's something that we have been engaged with RMLD all, all along. They did not participate in this particular analysis, but, but we left out a whole, there's the, the things that I probably should have said as I show these, we were focused on things that Reading could do. We, there's, there's another page, I guess, of, of things that pertain to energy. I mean, RML, and we, we with Rick, with RMLD regularly, Chuck Underhill comes and meets with the committee and we talk about, you know, their plans, you know, they have to have energy efficiency plans. So, I mean, they have, they have like three major, you know, initiatives that are, that are central to this. They have a clean energy initiative. They have a, a energy efficiency initiative. And they have an electrification initiative. And all of those three things tie completely into this. And maybe the things that we would propose to do would, wouldn't don't make any sense at all if, if RMLD isn't right in the middle of it. So, you know, I, they're, they're absolutely a partner in this.
Awesome. We're, I think, hoping to have kind of a, a joint meeting of sorts to take place at some point in the future. Maybe it's October-ish. But we should talk about that also, more for them to kind of lay out some of the things they're already doing and for us to all understand where there are good overlaps that we can take advantage of.
Well, interestingly enough, you know, RMLD is updating their own sustainability plan right now.
Timing is everything, isn't it? Denise, I didn't, I, I meant to, to ask if you had any comments right after David. I apologize. I, I didn't. But let me do that now.
That's quite all right. I'm, I'm all set and I'm great with what David has said. So, I'm all set. Thank you.
Great. Other questions or comments on the board? Go.
I just have a question for David. It was a good presentation. I read through everything. And just a question on where did the 10 vehicles or more come from? Is that, are other cities and towns doing that for the EV or the, just the electrical conduit supply to be there? Or like 10 parking spots, to me, is not a big building.
You're muted, David.
Yeah. So, there, that language was, was, was borrowed from somewhere. And I don't remember, I'll write offhand where it is. I will, I will find that out and let you know. But we did not, we did not make it up. You know, it was, it was a recommended language. And the, the 10, no, I mean, 10 parking spots is not that's, that's not a huge building. But then I think when we're talking about electrical vehicle charging stations, the idea is to have them be readily available. So, it's not that hard. That's, that's an interesting area, by the way, where, where RMLD has been working very hard. They, they, they have some partnerships that they're working on where the with certain suppliers, certain vendors, the, the charging station itself is almost free. The, the expense of, of, of the charging station is pretty much getting power to where it would be, you know? So, I mean, the building, you know, trenching and conduit, stuff like that. The actual charging stations, and with some, with certain vendors is practically free. So I don't, I don't think it's, needs to be a big cost driver, but it just says that, that we, you know, we just would encourage it to be built in from the beginning, because of course, you know, when you're, when, when the issue is, is the utility, you know, you really want to be digging up the concrete in the beginning, you know, not, not later.
Not more than once.
Yeah.
Great, thanks, folks.
And I'll take that as an action about where the, where that number came from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, folks, appreciate you coming in and thanks for sharing the presentation. Very helpful for, for our thinking, I obviously, I think that Vanessa hit it square on and Bob in terms of let's, let's kind of understand where we are, what we've got, and then talk about the groups that should get engaged to help establish this, let's not call it a master plan, but kind of an overarching plan. So that we don't get caught up in, in words. Cool, thanks, folks. So next on our list was vote to sponsor stretch code bylaw. I'm going to suggest if it's okay with the rest of the board, let the Reading Coalition, who was probably in the waiting room, let them come on and speak first and then we'll come back. And maybe we'll take a five minute break and then we can come back. Sorry, okay, let's do that, so please, let's let in Sammy and I'm drawing a blank for a moment, there she is, Erica, thank you. Hi, Sammy.
Hi, Mark, how are you? Hi, everybody.
Good, good, hi, Erica.
Hi, thank you for having us.
Oh, thanks for joining us, please, the floor is yours, please tell us what's going on.
Is it okay if I share my screen?
Please.
Okay. All right. Can folks see that okay? All right, so thank you so much for the opportunity. Mark is our liaison to the Reading Coalition for Prevention and Support Board, our advisory board, and thought it would be great for us to come and give you the annual update that we like to do. But I just want to start off and just let you know a little bit about our coalition. We fall under the police department, under the town of Reading. Bob is one of our huge day to day supporters and our chief of police, as well as superintendent of schools. We work very closely with the key town partners, so I'm just going to kind of walk you through a little bit about the coalition and then give you some highlights on what we've been working on during COVID. So as most of you know, the coalition actually started from the select board. The select board was one of the key driving forces that allowed the formation of the coalition back in 2006. We're formerly, we're known as Reading Coalition Against Substance Abuse. We went through a renaming over the last year, we wanted our name to more acknowledge our current mission, which is to focus on prevention and support. And we've expanded a little bit beyond substance misuse. We do some mental health promotion as well, so we wanted our name to reflect that. So our primarily goals have been on improving collaboration and reducing substance use. And today, we offer programs and services that go beyond the substance misuse prevention and focus on mental health promotion. So one of the first resources that I want to mention is a really important resource that we collaborate with William James College for, called our Interface Referral Service. Our partnership with them started in 2016. This was a program that we were able to fund with the support of the hospital trustees. At the beginning, they launched our pilot project with us. And then we also received grant funding to get this project going. Since 2016, we've had over 300 residents use the service to match with outpatient licensed mental health professionals. So I just want to kind of walk you through a little bit about how the service has been helpful and also a little bit about how folks can find out more information and use this if they need it for their families. So it's a confidential service, we contract with William James College, they're formerly known as the Mass School of Professional Psychology. So some folks know them by them, that name, but they were renamed a few years ago. They operate the Interface Referral Service, callers are matched with licensed mental health professionals from their database. There's over a thousand credential providers in the database that specialize in different forms of therapeutic support. Each referral meets the location, insurance and specialty needs of the caller and they do have telehealth services available for folks, obviously during, during COVID. That's been greatly expanded, which has been amazing. Just to give you a little background about folks that use the service. So we've had 308 families call into our William James College Reading contract. And when they call in, they are asked a number of questions to get a sense of how they can be helped by the intake counselor. And they give presenting concerns of what they're concerned about. So for example, a mom might call in and say, I'm concerned that my 12 year old is, is displaying some, maybe some worrisome signs, the school's a little worried about anxiety. I'm looking for an outpatient provider that might specialize in dealing with preteens and anxiety. So a presenting concern might be anxiety. So of the 308 callers that have used the service since 2016, the majority have called in as a presenting concern for anxiety, followed by depression and then ADHD, as well as behavioral issues, social issues, stress, addictions and suicidal ideation. What's interesting is addictions is only 5% of folks presenting concern. That is not surprising to Sammy or I and folks that work with people who are struggling with substance misuse. It's often not the starting point for people wanting to change their life. Sometimes they might come at it from a different perspective, they might want to start with a different issue. But one of the amazing things that's happened in the behavioral health community is we now have co-occurring disorder treatment. So as folks move into treatment and therapeutic supports, they will be asked questions about substance misuse and that may open the door for them to possibly get on the path to recovery. So it doesn't always present as a starting point, but it doesn't mean it won't get addressed. So I just want to point that out, that it's very important to have a little bit of a broader perspective to make sure that we get people in for care. Just to give folks a sense of what to expect if they were to call the helpline. When they call, they'll speak with a referral counselor that is trained by the William James College. They're typically master or doctoral level students that are attending William James College. They receive a very extensive training. They'll complete a confidential intake with the Reading caller for, takes about 15, 20 minutes. They'll be asked specific information like email, phone number, that concerns, a person can call for themselves, their child. They can call for a spouse or an elderly fam, family member, but it is important that that person be part of the process. So in order to get information for someone, they do have to be part of the process. And then they also look at what are some of the timeframes that folks might be available for appointments? So one of the reasons why we wanted to have the service available to folks is we heard from the community that it was very difficult sometimes to find a provider that they could get to, that was open when their child was available and that was affordable. So the interface referral matching process takes all of that into consideration. Once they focus on making a match, the referral counselor then goes back to the database, takes a few days to search for providers. One of the unique services that they provide is they reach out to providers to say, I have a mom with a 12 year old that's looking for support around anxiety, do you have room in your practice to take on a new patient? So it saves the person from calling lots of front desks to ask that, that question. William James kind of takes that off their plate to make sure that they're actually available. Once the referral counselor has identified two or three matches that could work for a family, they'll call back or reach out by email if that's what the folks prefer. And they'll give them their provider's name and credentials, location and phone number. And then they'll follow up to make sure that it worked out, that they made an appointment, that they were able to connect. And once that process is completed, they close the referral, but we do have people who call back. We've had about 10% of our users call back for another concern or family member. So that also is helpful for us to know that people liked the service when they first used it and went back and, and asked for more help, which is great. So this is the way that folks can get access to the interface helpline. It's open Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, but you can leave a voicemail after hours and they will get back to you. There's also a website, the phone number is 1-888-244-6843. And all of this information is on our Reading Coalition website, which you can link through the town or the school website and we'll share that at the end of our presentation. So before I move on to other projects, I just want to check in and see if folks have any questions about interface before we move on. All good? Okay, great. So a few prevention projects that I want to mention are two long-term projects that we've worked on for many years. We have created a mental health first aid program in our community, it started about seven years ago. Since we started the program with the Reading Public Schools, the police department and the town, we've trained over 800 people in mental health and youth mental health first aid. That's a day long training typically, where folks get advice and support on how they could become a first aider. Basically to provide the same type of first aid you would, if it was a physical injury, with emotional support. So it's a very popular program during COVID, we have learned to teach the program virtually. The National Council on Behavioral Health oversees the program in the United States and they were able to deploy new resources for us to do that. CM and I just taught a class this past month in August for the new teachers, the new teacher induction, there were 27 folks that just got recently certified. And as part of our mental health first aid trainings, we also involve our school resource officers and, and other resources that might be beneficial to folks getting trained. So it's a great program and it's available. We will be teaching more classes this fall, that's open to residents, many of our residents have taken it, but we'll be letting folks know how they can take it virtually for the first time. We also are part of something called the Mystic Valley Public Health Coalition. It's a partnership across our region of seven communities and involves Medford, Malden, Melrose, Wakefield, Stonem and Winchester. And together, over the last seven years, we have worked to focus on opioid prevention as well as underage drinking prevention. And as a regional community, we've done a number of extensive projects, data collection, analysis. And we meet about twice a month and so we're very engaged. And I will say during, when COVID first happened, the Mystic Valley connection for us was extremely valuable for Sammy and I. One of the benefits that, that we benefit from as part of the coalition is they provide professional development resources for us to attend trainings. And Sammy and I were, were able to get over 40 hours of professional development training sponsored by the Mystic Valley, as well as be part of a number of online webinars and trainings that helped us get ready to be more available remotely, as well as they sponsor our Zoom subscription. So that has been very, very useful, we have used that quite a bit. I want to turn it over to Sammy to talk a little bit about some of our intervention projects and our resources. Some of you may not know Sammy, she's been working with us since October of 2019. She has been an amazing outreach coordinator for us. We're so happy to have her full time with Bob's support and Chief Clark's support, as well as the superintendent of schools, we're able to have a full time position and they were part of the hiring process to bring Sammy on. So Sammy's a great resource and I'll turn it over to her to talk a little bit about our chemical health and CIT programs.
Thank you, Erica. And so as Erica mentioned, we wanted to share some information with you all about two of our primary intervention projects. So the first is the Chemical Health Education Program and we have partnered with the Reading Public School District for this program. And this was put in place to provide students who may violate the school substance use or chemical health policies with an opportunity to receive some education and support rather than simply a punitive measure. So for example, if a student is caught vaping on school grounds, instead of simply suspending that student, we implemented a program where that student would actually be referred to take a chemical health class with myself and with one of the wellness teachers, Michelle Hopkinson. And in that class, we talk about decision-making and accountability, as well as helping students understand a little bit more about the role that substances could play in their life and what addiction looks like. And this gives us a great opportunity, again, to provide education and support for students and also allows me to be able to work with students one-on-one to figure out if there's a deeper issue, if a student requires some additional support around mental health or substance use concerns. And this gives us a chance to connect back with the parents. So we're able to hear from the parents if they have concerns, if they've maybe noticed a change in their child's behavior. So this has been a great opportunity for us to reach out and support both students and families and try to intervene at a very early level if we have concerns about a student's substance use. And in the past academic year, we had 19 students complete this program with us. And one of the other intervention projects that we've been very excited about is the Crisis Intervention Team or CIT. And this Crisis Intervention Team is something that comes from a national initiative by the Association of Chiefs of Police, really looking for a push towards police departments offering increased behavioral health services. And so the seeds for this program started in Reading about three years ago when several officers attended the CIT training to learn additional skills for supporting people who may be having a mental health or substance use crisis that officers respond to. So at this time, we have just a little over a third of the police department has gone through this training, which is an impressive number, it's a very extensive training, it's, it's a 40 hour training. So officers have to commit a lot of time to go and, and get this done. And what we, starting in January, were able to implement is a follow-up piece. And so now, any mental health or substance use related call for service that comes in for the, that comes into the police department, will receive a follow-up phone call. So we will reach out to people after the fact and check in and see how they're doing in a calmer moment. If they need services, you know, do they need a therapist? Do they know how to find one? Are they concerned about a loved one with a substance use issue? And so this has been a really exciting program for us because it gives us that chance to connect back to the community and offer some support after something scary has happened, when the police have had to respond again for either a mental health or a substance use concern. And so since piloting this program, we've been doing this since January of this year. We have made 152 follow-up phone calls to Reading residents. And, and we work in partnership on this program, you know, first with the Reading Police Department, who have been a tremendous support for us in getting this going, as well as with the Respond Domestic Violence Counselor, who is stationed part-time at the police department. She typically will handle follow-up on any domestic violence incidences. Whereas I will handle follow-up for any mental health or substance use concerns. And we also work very closely with the town human and elder services. So concerns involving an elder in town, we then pass that information over to them as the experts and coordinate to make sure that the needs of the community are being met. And do we, any questions on that or else I'll jump into some resources?
Okay, Karen.
Karen.
Just a quick question, I know 220 is one for the books. Does it seem like the use of the program is more this year than previous years, is there a trend?
For the CIT program or for the chemical health education?
Actually for both.
Definitely, so we are certainly have seen, I'll start with CIT. We definitely have seen an uptick in recent months, you know, especially since kind of March onward with substance use calls. And so we are seeing an increase in people struggling with substance use concerns as well as mental health concerns. You know, certainly, we know that isolation is a huge factor for people who are struggling with their sobriety or who are working towards their sobriety, as well as for people with mental health concerns. You know, that lack of connection can be really, really challenging. So we have seen an uptick in the past several months with the CIT program. And, and I will add as well, we have gotten, as I said, I think we've done 152 calls and we have had overwhelming positive support. People have been so, so appreciative of these phone calls. And we at first were interested to see what the feedback would be from the community and from people receiving this type of follow-up, but it has been overwhelmingly positive. And as far as the chemical health education program is concerned, that one's been a little bit trickier. So with students not being in school, they haven't been receiving the, the violations or they haven't been in violation of school policy. So we haven't been getting referrals necessarily in that same avenue. However, we have continued to work with students who we were connected with before the school closing and have continued to hear from school staff, school administration, as well as parents around concerns related to students. So we have continued to support students throughout the pandemic, even though the avenue for referral has looked a little different. But we are up and ready to go, I have been working with the support of Erica and with Michelle Hopkinson to convert the Chemical Health Education Program to be able to be run virtually. So we are ready to go for this school year to either provide that curriculum in person or via Zoom, depending on how the pandemic shakes out.
Sammy, should I move to the next slide for you?
I think we had a question from Anne.
Sammy, thank you, and Erica, thank you so much for this presentation. I really was not aware of the Crisis Intervention Team pilot program, that's really encouraging and exciting work that you're doing. That's really encouraging and exciting work that you're doing. I was wondering, for residents who might be, you know, not necessarily knowing what they need, you know, they don't know that they're looking for outpatient mental health services and wouldn't know to call William James. They also may not know whether they're in crisis or not. Can residents call the Reading Coalition for Prevention and support for further direction? I know the two of you are certainly highly qualified. I know there's been some talk about the Police Department perhaps bringing in, as I'm a psychiatric social worker, I'm not sure if that's the right terminology, I was wondering if you could speak to that?
Absolutely. So Erica and I are absolutely resources for the community, and we do have people who reach out to us looking for support. And so we certainly work with members of the community if they call and are looking for resources or have questions about what's available. But I think that you hit on a really important point, and that's one of the big things we've seen with the Crisis Intervention Team, is that a lot of times, people don't always know exactly what they need or really know what the resources are. And so I think that has been a part of the reason why the response has been so overwhelmingly positive, has been that when we're able to reach out in a calm moment, I am able to take the time to really explain to somebody what their options are, what services we have, but also hear from them what their concerns are. And so we're able to kind of work through together what some of these presenting issues may be, and then between Erica and I, we're usually able to come up with a pretty good plan of a referral for them to help them connect to the appropriate professionals. But I think it definitely is, you know, a big piece of that is being available to talk with people and troubleshoot and figure out, you know, what is it that they need, what is it that their family needs, and how can we support them in accessing the appropriate professional?
Great. And I imagine Human and Elder Services is sometimes the first point of contact for people. Sometimes it's the Police Department, sometimes it's the Reading Coalition. And so it's a matter of connecting people to the right resources, regardless of what their first point of contact is.
Yes, absolutely.
I think that's one of the reasons why the CIT program was created, was to offer additional law enforcement training as first responders responding to a scene, to be more empathetic and to be more understanding of mental health. But then also, sometimes it is a family or a person's way into getting access to more support. One of the tricky things for first responders is at the scene, they're dealing with the most immediate crises. And so they were, over the past few years, we have been promoting resources and encouraging folks to use the Elliot Mobile Crisis Service, which is our regional crisis mobilization service, as well as Interface Referral Service. But what we recognize is that when people are in a crisis, it's hard to take in information. It's just not the time. So now having the follow-up phone call when folks have a little bit of time to kind of figure out where they want to head next. And sometimes people don't know where, but we're here to talk that through with them. Sammy and I are both not clinicians. We do not play a clinical role. That is a resource that some police departments have. Our partners in Wakefield have that as part of their CIT program, and it's definitely something that I know the chief, you know, has talked about. But one of the reasons why we're trying to pilot CIT is to kind of see how does it work for us and what are some of the needs that might pop up. So we already are gathering a lot of data and information about what are the presenting concerns, what are the most asked-for supports and services. Sammy's done everything from connect people with getting health insurance to talking barriers through about how to encourage their young person to actually sign on to counseling. So there's lots of different barriers that come up for people. And I also encourage people to call Interface directly if they're not sure what they need. It's a very common question that the intake counselors get, is sometimes folks will just say, "I don't know. I'm worried about my child's behavior, and I don't know where to go." So we often encourage people to check in with primary care, as well as check in with the Interface Referral Service, because through the intake process, they can help identify some possible next steps. So it is a resource either way, even if folks aren't sure. So just to throw that out there, that folks can definitely contact Sammy or I, but we can also direct them to more specialized resources.
You mentioned very, you mentioned quickly, and I didn't quite catch it, when people are in crisis, you refer them to some kind of regional?
Yes. So throughout the state, there is a regional crisis service for particular communities. We are part of the Elliot service area. Winchester and beyond uses a company, our nonprofit program called Advocates. So if folks can call Elliot 24/7 if they are in a mental health crisis, and clinicians are able to be deployed to a location, or they can assist over the phone or set up an outpatient intake. We also use this quite a bit in our school system. The Mobile Crisis Unit will come out to a school and do an assessment for a child with the parent's permission. So it's a service that's used very frequently in our community, and we definitely have a lot of residents that utilize Elliot as an outpatient mental health provider. So it's a service that we work with a lot. I did want to mention one other service that we're connected to that I think is very beneficial. Sammy, could you talk a little bit about the hub, just to kind of let them know about the broader resources that we can have access to?
Absolutely. So the Hub Team is a model for an interdisciplinary response team of people who are assisting people in crisis. And so the regional hub that we have been able to attend from Reading is actually hosted in Medford, but a lot of the same providers that cover the Reading area also work in Medford, so it's a good connection for us to have with this Medford team. And the hub is comprised of many different organizations and entities. So it's usually representatives from the Police Department, from the Board of Health, from the homelessness services, from local hospitals, from Elliot, certainly has a representative, the Department of Mental Health, Mystic Valley Elder Services, as well as the more local contingents, so representatives from coalitions or from other similar programs who are managing or overseeing the CIT program. And so this is a really, really helpful program because it gets all of these different providers in the same room, or more recently, on the same Zoom call. So we're able to present cases of people whose needs maybe surpass those that we have available to us at the local level. We're able to bring that concern to our bigger regional team and tap into some additional resources. And this is all done confidentially, so people's information is protected. You know, typically, the name of the person in question is not released to the group, only in a small discussion after, with whoever the appropriate service provider has been identified. And so, you know, we have been able to utilize the Hub Team when we had residents who had really challenging mental health concerns that felt like they were past the capacity of some of our local resources, and we were able to connect on the spot with representatives from the Department of Mental Health and from Elliot. And by the end of the meeting, we had an outreach plan in place for this person. So it's a really, really great resource to have, to take some of those cases where we've done what we can and we're still really struggling to get that additional support.
Right. Oh, not one more follow-up on Elliot Mental Health. Do I understand correctly that, so if someone is in, someone in Reading is in a mental health crisis, they could call 911, and they would be attended to by the Police Department with follow-up from the Crisis Intervention Team, or they could directly call Elliot Mental Health, and they would be directly connected with clinician first responders? Is that fair?
Yes. The tricky thing is the Elliot Mobile Crisis Unit does cover a wide region, so it depends on how quickly they can get someone out. Typically, they say that they try to respond within two hours of a call. With COVID, my guess is they're probably trying to do a lot more telehealth and virtual support. But one of the things that our Police Department will do is they will involve Elliot if that is something that they can do on the spot, so they will call Elliot if needed. If a person calls 911 first, but then says, "Oh, I wanted to involve Elliot," the police can do that. They're in close contact. But it is a resource, and it's part of our resource list that Sammy will talk about that gives more information on how Elliot works. And if folks live in other communities or work in other communities, there's a state website, an emergency mobilization crisis, where they can search by zip code for what their local regional group is. But it is an amazing support and service, and it's open 24/7. Some of the counselors have gone through our mental health first aid training, and they have said, "I'm awake at 3:00 in the morning, and I'm taking calls, so if someone wants to talk to me, I'm going to answer the phone no matter what." So it's okay for people to call, ask questions, talk about a family member, and they will do their best. The only tricky bit that I'll let people know is the person who's receiving services must give consent. So the adult that is asked, that needs the service, has to give consent. Elliot cannot force a service unless the person is sectioned through another procedure by police. If it's a child, a parent can't consent for the child. But just something to be aware of, which is often sometimes why folks will use 911 and Mobile Crisis and kind of work with them both. But our officers are very familiar with Elliot, and that's been part of their training, is to use that service more and that support if they have questions as well. Does that answer?
Yes, this has been very informative. Thank you.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Time check with you guys. I think you're on your last couple of slides.
Yeah, we're almost there. We've just got one quick one, and this is a really fast one. Sammy, I'll let you talk a little bit about resources and let folks know how to find them.
Yes, perfect. And so we have, I know we've touched on a couple of different resources, but we have compiled a resource guide with some more COVID-specific resources, so things like Virtual Alcoholics Anonymous or Narcotics Anonymous meetings, supports for parents on how to talk to children about COVID-19, resources for helping families transition back into the school year. So this is a really, really great guide that we have put together. We're keeping updated with resources as things change, which is, and this is available on our website. And additionally, on our website, we have our Substance Misuse Coalition Resource List and our Mental Health Resource List, which has a great overview of some of the either substance use or mental health options available in our community and in our area. Also, Respond Inc. is a nonprofit domestic violence organization, which has partnered with the Reading Police. So there is an advocate who is typically, or pre-COVID, she was stationed at the Police Department two days a week. Respond has a 24-hour hotline for people who are looking for more specific domestic violence support. And then there are additional resources to support the families of people who may be struggling with addiction or with a mental health concern. And then, of course, the Massachusetts Substance Use Helpline, which is a great resource in helping people connect to substance use treatment. So all of these resources and more are available on our website. And as we mentioned before, you know, this is, it's a lot of information, and sometimes people don't totally know exactly what they're looking for, so we always encourage people to reach out to us directly. We are always happy to help as best we can, kind of talk through an issue and see if we're able to do some of that matchmaking support and help people get to the appropriate clinical provider.
Okay, so much.
Thank you, folks. You are a tremendous resource to the community. I am amazed at the number of folks that have already taken advantage, but I know also that this is a resource that's available for anyone who feels that they need some assistance. This is the, the website is best accessed by the Reading Public School website, is that right?
Yes. And the link is at the top of your screen, and you can link through the town website as well.
Great.
And mine and Erica's contact information is also available on the website. So anybody with questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to either of us.
Awesome. I had the chance to see part of the Mystic Valley presentation at their annual meeting, just a little part of it, but it's very impressive, kind of the range of resources that are out there and that are available to residents. And I think that's the most important thing. So if you've got concerns, questions, there are resources right here that you can tap into. Vanessa?
I just want to take a moment to say thank you. I've seen this program grow and expand to cover more areas and to service really a vulnerable population in our community. It's supportive, it's encouraging, it's positive, and it's everything that you would want in a response to people who are in need. So my sincere thanks for everything that you're doing here.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, folks?
Thank you so much for all that you do. And to residents, I'd say, please don't hesitate. It's a very difficult time right now for everyone, and, you know, don't hesitate to take advantage of these resources. They're here for all of us.
Sam here, thank you, ladies. This is my first viewing of, you know, in a meeting of all these resources, and I was a little bit surprised that 308 is not a big number. I don't know if that is good or bad, but over four years. So I'm sure these presentations help, like what Ann said. I think a lot of people might not know about this, so this is very helpful to the town. Thank you.
Yes, we try to promote Interface at every opportunity, but there's always folks we run into that don't know about it. We are one of 52 communities that have the service. Winchester, as well as Wakefield and Melrose around us have it as well. And about, you know, 308 over those number of years is about average for our surrounding communities as well. But one thing that we noted was between March and June, we had 39 families use the service, right, in the heat of the beginning of the pandemic. So we were really thrilled that people were using it, especially as telehealth was being rolled out, and people were having struggles with getting medication and figuring things out. And so we're really happy to see that people used it during that time. But Interface wanted to let the community know that this may be a great time to reach out. As the pandemic continues, there's fatigue with everything that's going on, and for mental health challenges that can exacerbate things. So, you know, reach out, there's resources, there's way more telehealth than we've ever had, ever. And it's so much easier to connect with a provider than ever. So we really encourage people to use that as a starting point.
Great, folks. Thank you again very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Select Board members, let's take five minutes. I've got, kind of, I've got 9:26. When we come back right after, just 9:30, just a moment after 9:30, we'll recess for five minutes, and we'll come back and continue with the agenda. When we come back right after, just 9:30, just a moment after 9:30, we'll recess for five minutes and we'll come back and continue with the agenda.
Mark?
There you go.
I think on the tree thing, I think you brought up a good point that was discussed last time, that we have to find out if this is under our purview.
Yeah, yeah, if there is an option.
I know it's frustrating for Ralph, but are we the right body?
Yeah, I think let's, let's talk about how to, this is one, a closing one. A closing issue. Yeah. Thanks, I think you're right, too.
Congratulations, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Oh, I see, oh, the hyphen, there it is, okay.
Oh, is it a hyphen?
I wasn't sure if anyone would know who I was with the new last name.
You gotta give us a couple of days, please.
Yeah, I'll slowly transition.
Yeah, it's a lot of work for you ladies to get married.
Hopefully, the guys are doing about half the work, too, so we'll see.
No, I mean, the name changes, the license.
Sorry, yeah.
All that stuff.
Caitlin, did you go on a honeymoon or?
We went up to the Mount Washington Hotel for a few days. So that was really nice, yeah.
That's, I've never been, but I've heard it's amazing.
Yeah, I had never stayed there. I'd been there to like visit and see the sights, but I'd never stayed there, and it's really cute.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Vanessa, you back? We don't have you on video yet. Try a text. There we go. Awesome. Okay, we are back in session. That was my gavel striking. Back in session. So let's, the next topic for us is to look at the stretch code bylaw. And Karen, I'm going to ask for your assistance with this also. Last meeting, we talked briefly about what is being asked in terms of the stretch code. It does require a bylaw change. In fact, in David's slides that he was just showing, we got some of the more updated information on how most communities have already adopted this. The way to do that would be for us to bring it forward to town meeting. So putting it into this warrant, we go forward to town meeting for, obviously, a complete discussion there of what's involved. And with town meeting's approval, then it goes forward. It is by itself an important goal for sustainability. And if there is going to be a move toward green communities, it's one of the requirements as well. Did I kind of capture that reasonably well, Karen?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, so first question, I think, are there any questions, any other questions related to kind of, first of all, what the stretch code is, and then, second of all, what we are, what we would be voting on tonight when we make a motion?
I make a notification.
Mark, if it's helpful, I have a draft of a bylaw from Town Council.
Oh, that'd be great. Yeah, Karen, go ahead. But Bob, can you put it up on the screen?
All right, well, Mark, I'm sorry, Bob, is what you're going to put up different than what was in the packet?
You know, honestly, I don't remember that it was, that it was in the packet.
The packet from last meeting or this meeting?
I was going through today, which I believe was for tonight there, yes. I was going to comment that, I can't comment about the beginning, the 710 through 710.12. I assume that's straightforward. And also 710.3, but the purpose, 7.10.2, I know this is a draft. I'm not sure where those numbers came from. I don't, I don't, there's no restriction of 3,000 square feet for new construction. It's just all new residential construction. So I, I'm not sure that that, where that came from. And then, as you guys saw on the slide that I provided a couple of weeks ago, the specific rules say that for commercial, it would apply to those greater than 40,000 square feet. So I'm, I just, I know that's a sample, that purpose there. I, I, I don't think that is accurate, so that probably won't be what it'll look like.
I can share a comment on that.
Okay.
If you'll see in 710.2, it cites Mass General Law Criterion 5, and this is a strict legal citation. This is what's in there. But then in 710.3, in the discussions that the town did not wish to, you know, use the $3,000 cutoff, I'm sorry, 3,000 square foot cutoff, for instance, it just says down here, all, you know, all construction. So the actual bylaw is not using the 3,000 square foot number. It's just, that's just a citation in the law.
So why would that be in there?
Because that, it's referring the actual law that's on the books. I mean, maybe it doesn't have to be, but.
Yeah, I know it is. I just, okay. If you want, I can follow up on that. That's the first I've heard of that. I don't think it specifies any kind of square feet. I think it's just.
Yeah, Town Council worked with, I don't remember the fellow's name, but the fellow you guys were working with, they worked with him directly. I'm not saying this is his suggestion. I'm just saying they had a pretty thorough discussion. Beyond that, I'm not sure.
I thought I read somewhere in the packet that what we're voting on tonight is not the link.
That's correct.
Here, that, you know, we'll get further edits from Town Council.
But certainly, if you folks have guidance, you know, you're going to be voting on the actual language in two weeks. Not to say it can't be modified on town meeting floor, but you know, whatever your intention is, is what the wording should be. So if you have questions that I can direct back to Town Council, I'm happy to do that.
We are going to vote, sorry, we are voting on specific language in two weeks.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'll take it as a to-do to follow that purpose, because that was, everything else looks pretty boilerplate.
Yeah, and just to fill in this last part here, if you're going to bring it to November town meeting, and town meeting approves it, and then it has to go to the Attorney General, this is something that does not take effect until the Attorney General approves it, whereas there's some zoning that takes effect as soon as there's a public hearing. So there'll have to be some discussion about what date to put in there. Ray and I discussed it a little bit with Gene from the building department perspective, that July 1, 2021 was probably the most practical date. The Attorney General typically has not been approving things for, say, 90 days, 120 days. It's hard to know with the pandemic. And what we don't want is, all of a sudden, on an arbitrary day, you know, May 3, then all of a sudden, the building cone changes, and depending on whether, you know, there's projects in the works or not, there could be a change. Now, obviously, should town meeting pass this in November, we'll advertise this to all the builders, and most of the builders know about this, so it shouldn't be a big deal. But we just wanted to make it a cleaner implementation time and not in the middle of the heaviest spring construction season. But again, that, that's a date that you folks can put in, you know, any date you want, but it will not take effect until the AG has approved.
Okay.
I would, I would comment that this should go into effect as soon as the AG signs it. I would specifically hate to miss an entire, an entire year of planning in our community. But we can certainly tell everyone, if town meeting agrees that this is a good thing to do, and it's going to the AG, as Bob suggested, we can certainly advertise it. And since 283 other communities have already adopted it, like, it's, it's not that big of a deal.
That would make sense to make it effective upon ratification by the Attorney General's office.
I think I can support that as well. So this is, I think, by the way, it's also page 56 of the packet. So any, first of all, any questions about what's here? And what's, to kind of cover the ground one more time, the, there was a lot of discussion between Climate Action Bylaw Committee and us about who should sponsor this for the warrant. And Climate Action Committee felt very strongly that the Select Board would be a much better group to do that. The Bylaw Committee kind of deferred a little bit and hoped, I think, that the Select Board would approve it. I think that's the right way of putting it. And so, so now it's here for us to make that decision. And then, if, well, whatever, assuming if we were to approve it this evening, it would become a warrant article that we would then be putting in for the warrant, which we vote on at the next meeting, which is in two weeks. So that's kind of the process from here, and then obviously to town meeting from there. So any other questions on what we have here so far? Go ahead, Vanessa. When I hear you.
Thanks, Mark. I'm happy to support this, if the board is amenable to it. I'm curious, I understand that there needs to be a single sponsor. Is there anything to say that the warrant can't also indicate that bylaw and climate are also in favor of it? Just so that it, you know, presents clearly that this is widely accepted and has many sponsors.
Bob?
Yeah, certainly, that can be indicated and would be indicated in the warrant report. The Bylaw Committee and FinCom are generally required to give an opinion to town meeting on things in their jurisdiction. But that's different than sponsoring, you know, approving it or recommending it is not the same as sponsoring it. And I didn't go to your meeting with the Bylaw Committee, so I don't know their feelings on that. Certainly, we can include a report from the Climate Advisory Committee if they also wish to make a recommendation, just like we do for FinCom and the Bylaw. And again, if they wanted to jointly sponsor it, I don't really see a problem with that. But it is up to, you know, those individual bodies.
Yeah, we will have to ask them.
I mean, if they're interested, it might be a nice touch.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, I think climate advisory is a no-brainer. I'm not sure with the Bylaw Committee, obviously, they'd have to bring it up at a meeting and see what's up, but sure. Any other questions, comments? All right, I do have a motion here. Oops. Sorry, I have one too many screens.
I'd like to say you're doing a great job. You haven't kicked any of us off, ever. It's awesome.
So far. So Carlo, can I ask you to read, this would be now the second motion here?
Yep. Move to sponsor an article at upcoming town meeting to amend the bylaws to add the stretch energy code.
Is there a second?
Can.
Karen, seconds, thank you. Any further discussion? None appearing. Let's take a vote. So Carlo?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yep.
And Mark, yes. Five zero, thank you. All right, let's go back to agenda.
Mark, we could either do the rest of the town meeting warrant or the town manager's goals, whatever you prefer.
I'm fine, just when we do the goals, that keeps us in order in the packet. I made, I make notes in the packet. It's easier for me to kind of stay in order if we can. Okay, town manager goals, so. Sorry, the picture of Erica and Sammy, let me just get past that. Great, so this is, I've got it as page 69 in the packet. Is, so we've kind of, we've had a few iterations here. We started out, Bob kind of came back to us with some suggestions in terms of goals. When we did the retreat and the follow-up discussion at the following meeting, we, we talked about some priorities, and then we discussed that we might, we want to make sure that we incorporate priorities and thoughts into the town manager goals for fiscal '21. Bob did take a look at kind of what he had sent before and updated some of the things that are here as well in terms of, you know, what the goals were and what's incorporated there. What I think would be helpful tonight is for members to kind of share where they have ideas, questions, comments in terms of what they should be, with the goal, the goal being that we can formalize this, hopefully even at our next meeting, that we can turn this, you know, we can talk about it tonight. Bob can give some consideration to what we're talking about as well, and then we formalize that into the goals document and go forward from there. So I would open the floor. Who would like to make comments first? I would be happy to make some comments if no one else does.
If I just put this up on the screen?
Oh, sorry, I'm, all right, so I'm one screen light on that right now. Let me, let me, if I could, go through my notes. So on goal number one, a community conversations, my suggestion is that we kind of broaden this to kind of community outreach. So the conversations are certainly a piece of it, but I think there are some other things that would be great. More, I'm going to call them listening sessions. Perhaps town staff and volunteers might even participate in some of those meetings, not to change it from a listening session, but sometimes to offer some, some, some thoughts on, on what's happening. So it's not just kind of, hey, what do you think? It's almost like, hey, here's, here's what's happening, here's what we're thinking. Now we're interested to hear what you think. And I just wondered if, if we just do a few sessions, that's not going to work. But if we had more sessions, that might be an opportunity to, to allow staff to go out and talk about some things as well. The key here, sorry, I'm reading my notes on the opposite screen. Key is to understand community needs and separately start a discussion on priorities. So I, I don't want to try to overdo what happens. I think it's a stepwise process. I think we've got to hear more about what's going on and then use that to kind of understand priorities and take them forward. This wraps into some of the other goals that we talked about also, where capital right now maybe isn't the right thing to think about in '21. Capital projects, new buildings, things like that. And more so, it's understanding the needs, doing programmatic changes as needed, and allocating resources in that direction, at least until we learn a little bit more about the kind of post-COVID world. So do you want me to go through kind of, I have a few other comments you want me to go through all? Okay.
Can I just ask you a question on that, Mark?
Sure.
I think I started hearing one thing, and then I ended up not hearing that.
Oops.
Is this more of a listening session like the overrides discussions were in terms of? At first, I thought the staff was presenting ideas to the public for reaction. But then I wasn't so sure, and I was, we were listening to the public as to what services are, you know, they may need. I suppose it could work either way, but there is a difference. I I suppose it could work either way, but there is a difference.
Yeah, and and this, this may be one that that's more of a both kind of answer. As I thought about it, I think that a lot of it is straight listening. You know, more like the 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 community conversations. But I I started to think that maybe it would be helpful to have a little bit of a talking section also. And I didn't want to put them together necessarily, because I think the first one does a great job. I'd love it to get to more people. I also would like to see how we transition that to understand the near term as well as long term priorities. Near term priorities might be what kind of services we want to be offering now, you know, what what do we need to do now? As well as the longer term kinds of things. And I wasn't sure if I wanted to kind of stop the conversation aspect and change it. Rather, I thought, no, it's it's an and, its conversations are great, that's kind of one activity. And then maybe there's another kind of activity that it's a bigger forum. It's not meant to be kind of a room at the library. It's it's meant to be, um you know, what may be a big zoom at this point, sorry, but kind of gathering more people. So you detected correctly, I wasn't sure how to play it other than to expand it.
Okay, thank you.
On sustainability, I think that that captures a lot of what's going on. I would like to talk more about, um as we talk about parking, about charging stations, the opportunity for electric vehicles into the town fleet and more partnership and and activities with RMLD. I thought could all be there. I think that there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of overlap with some of the RMLD things. And and obviously they need to do it for all their communities and that's fine. But um I think that there's, they're indicating a willingness to do some stuff and I'd love to take advantage of it. I I advantage in a good way, obviously. Economic development retention. So I I applaud this completely. My only comment is that I think it's both survival and thriving, not just retention. So it, the the first step is to make sure we get through this. It's the new grants and things like that. And then there's an element of thriving and thriving could be related to the downtown committee that's under discussion. It could be a lot of things that kind of help. You know, not just, you know, stay there, but build and grow. What other things can we do to encourage people to shop in town, that kind of stuff? And again, that's much too much in the weeds, but that's retention felt like not enough. I I wanted it to be more expansive. Economic development expansion. The one question here is, I don't know where the the Camp Curtis possibilities exist at this point. I know obviously things have changed. How they've changed, I'm not really sure. If it's still a possible activity now might be a really good planning time. But I don't know where that one's at.
Yeah, interestingly, I got an email today from the state that the National Guard and the Office of the Governor are still extremely interested in this, which was a bit of a surprise. So I'm having breakfast with Wakefield tomorrow, we'll chat about where we are. And then next week I'll sit down, I believe, with our conservation administrator as well as some of the planning staff to understand the role of ConsCom.
Awesome, awesome.
People are interested, you know, we may bring something to November town meeting that we deferred in the capital plan in the spring and we may put it back on the table.
Yeah, and and the exploration, that that sounds spot on. That sounds great. Number five, COVID nineteen impacts and seniors. So one of the things in here is, again, kind of assessing needs and additional services and opportunities that we might be able to bring forward. Kind of near term, I I call it kind of social activities that are not in person. I know that doesn't make much sense, but that's where we are. I'm scrolling down. Number nine, on building security. Is dispatch center separate from this completely? Or is it actually a little bit of overlap and should it be included here?
Um this, this goal was meant to just be, if you will, the policy paperwork, not the physical construction.
Got it. And and is is dispatch part of that? Is it kind of?
Part of the physical project and construction, yes. But the governance was more the three elected boards, putting their heads together and seeing what they had in common and what they had as differences.
Great. Number ten, sorry, I'm just going to go through these real fast. COVID nineteen impacts and thinking specifically about emergency planning and I don't know what the backup plan is and I don't want to hear it. But I just want to know that it's there and it is in kind of a protected additional site, I'm going to call it. So that things get even worse and suddenly there's an electrical pulse and whatever that that we are, you know, all kind of starting at zero. Capital, number eleven, capital parks and fields. Did the assessment at Simons already take place or did that get put on hold, the conservation assessment?
No, Simons was a, there was four projects. This is the only one that went forward, the Capitol and Parks. Simons was a separate one that we could bring back if you're interested.
I I think it's a good time to bring that one back also, again, just to understand what's buildable, what's not.
Yeah, that one, the ConsCom clearly had some work to do upfront. You know, hiring a I don't know, someone to survey the land and and specifically market out a wetland scientist probably.
Yeah, and and that's a, I think during COVID sorts of activities, those can definitely still take place. So maybe I I I think those those should go back. Capital buildings, number twelve, I'm just reading my note, make sure it makes sense. I'm sorry, I'm leaning over to the other screen here. Okay, so on this one, you know, given COVID, given where we are, it's less capital building activity, I think, in fiscal twenty one. So I'm wondering if we can turn this more into, back onto this community outreach for needs where we can utilize existing facilities and resources to offer other other activities, so not construction. I'm I'm repurposing this away from construction of new buildings and more toward activities that could take place. And those are all my comments. I'm sorry, there were so many. Who's next? Vanessa?
Um I, I'll go next because there's several I want to build up of what you already mentioned. And I think they may not necessarily necessarily fall into the preexisting goals as we've defined them. So I'll lay them out there and and see what the board, how how they might fit. On sustainability, Mark, you hit a lot of the points, you had David's presentation earlier. I think one of the things that I'd like to see is regular updates, whether it's monthly, whether it's semi monthly, whether it's quarterly, to provide the board and the public with progress on advancing the sustainability effort. So, uh you know, I'd love, I know, um you know, Joe gave a presentation, I think it was last year, about some of the initiatives that the town had taken. I found that very informative. I'd love to see an update on that. You know, we, last year, I had asked Bob to have quarterly PTT TF meetings. Three, right? Yeah. So, you know, and and so now we have that quarterly, they come in every few months to talk to us and we're able to address parking or or traffic concerns that that residents have. I think a regularly planned meeting for some, for issues around sustainability would be instructive. You know, one of the things that's been raised is communication and closing the loop with residents. So there are often times when residents reach out to us, we respond, but we also redirect to Bob or the staff. And we're sort of missing sort of the closing of that loop. So it would be nice perhaps as part of the town manager report, if there's some kind of tracking system that says, you know, the board had six questions this month and this is the status of them. Or this is how they were addressed, just so that the board is informed as well as the public. Because that, it allows the public to know that we're are responsive to their issues and and their concerns that they raise. I think more broadly on communication. You know, I think it it would be nice to have a more cohesive plan for communicating to the full board. I I sometimes feel a little out of the loop. You know, the chair and the vice chair, I know from having done it last year, spent a lot of time talking to Bob. But it seems, you know, I I'd like that to change in a way that the the other three members of the board can be equally well informed. Okay. So this is a delicate one, so I'll I'll tread carefully. I have heard, um I've heard complaints from residents about a particular department within the town of a, that involves a particular staff member. Bob, I I've raised this before. Uh I I won't say which one it is because, again, it's a personnel matter, so I want to be careful here. But when issues like this arise, we need to have a way to address them. This is ongoing, it's long term, it's consistent, and it's problematic. So how do we as a board, being sensitive to the fact that it's a personnel issue, address this with Bob and make it a priority for what's happening within this particular department? You know, maybe that's an executive session discussion, I'm not sure. But I'm raising that because it 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 hasn't gotten better. The health department has experienced some employee retention issues over the last several years. And as we continue to move through the pandemic, the high turnover in this department is concerning to me. I know we've talked about employer retention more broadly. But this particular department is so critical right now. I'd like to make sure that Bob has whatever resources or whatever support to make sure we are adequately staffed. And and this expands to include the Board of Health and that they've been doing a tremendous amount of work in the last seven, you know, six, seven months. Due to potentially staffing issues there. So I I would like to see employer retention, but within the health department specifically to be a goal for this year. And again, Mark, to build on yours for capital projects, Simon's way, you know, now is a good time to be planning, it's not a good time to be building. But it's, if we plan now, when we are, if we and the state are in a better financial situation, we'll at least know what we can do there. As far as a goal, I would want the Conservation Commission to be very active in that conversation. And more broadly, I I don't have a specific answer here, but you know, I am concerned about our seniors. The pandemic has been going on for a very long time. They are disproportionately affected. And I I'd love to continue, you know, I love the phone calls that the town staff made to, you know, hundreds of seniors in town. You know, what more can we be doing? We we aren't the only town dealing with this. But I'd like to make sure that this is a a demographic that gets the support they need, right? Always, but but especially now. So those are mine. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Vanessa. Others, any other comments? Anne?
I I do, um. I, um, the communications issue is partly on me with respect to working with Bob to come back to the board with the communications policy. And it's something that I mentioned in our retreat, it's something that I'm committed to doing and and am committed to doing. Hope to get to that soon, this fall. So now, so Bob, I noticed in your description of the community conversations, one member of the board has expressed an interest in expanding this goal beyond that of the library trustees. Was that in reference to my comments at the last time we talked about town manager goals? I wasn't sure if the the one board member was me. Oh, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. You may have said things, but I remember Vanessa specifically wanting to expand the goal to beyond what it currently was. And and tonight Marcus mentioned it, so I think it's a comment. But I just wanted to point out that, you know, the library trustees have their own set of goals and
Right.
It can be a part of a bigger one, but we can't make them change.
Right. Um, so I have some suggestions. I talked the last time we we'd raised town manager goals about incorporating equity and racial and social justice within the goals. So I could see them as falling within both community conversations and employee attraction and retention or being a standalone goal. However, you might see that framework working. So the last time we'd spoken, we talked about, you know, having not just sort of thematic goals, but some concrete measurables. So I did some thinking about what that could look like and some suggestions I had would include, you know, continuing the work that we've done together around the ad hoc committee and working to, you know, bring that proposal to life. Obviously, that involves a lot of other players, the Library Board of Trustees and Town Meeting. But, you know, continuing to to lead on that. We could have, I was thinking that the town could sponsor a couple of celebrations looking out to June. There is a new state holiday that's been declared by the state, Juneteenth. It's certainly not a new holiday, holiday celebrated by blacks in America, but it is a new state holiday. And I thought it's, it would be possible for the town of Reading, like we celebrate Memorial Day or Veterans Day or MLK Day. We could add Juneteenth to sort of our repertoire, whether and whether you know, HTRAC takes that on or the new Reading Alliance as envisioned under the ad hoc proposal. That that's one idea, something that could be a measurable. There was um a group of residents, I think, who spontaneously brought together a celebration on on the town lawn, a town hall lawn this year. Another, another event looking again to June would be a pride celebration, specifically the raising of a rainbow flag. It's something our neighboring communities do. I'm specifically thinking about the city of Woburn and the and the town of Wakefield. I know that they at least have a have a pride flag raising celebration every year, starting when I'm not, I'm not certain, but they certainly have been doing so in the last couple of years at least. With respect to employee retention and recruitment, one of the things we talked about actually in the context of the ad hoc committee was looking at that position and positions within the library, the challenges that we've, we sometimes have in writing and recruiting a diverse applicant pool. But there, there are another advisor, I think Chris Kelly had from this, from the school department had mentioned that there are certain networks that can be tapped in to through HR to recruit diverse applicant pools. But that's probably a conversation to be had with with Sean about recruitment practices. This kind of falls outside the equity and racial and social justice lens, but back to the community conversations topic, just thinking about thematically building bridges and repairing divisions in town. And that's something certainly I I personally would like the select board to partner with you, Bob, in doing. And I I mean, all of this I see as kind of a partnership with the board and the town manager and our different staff and volunteer base. Thank you.
Can I add a quick comment on that just for a second, and then I want to hear from other board members too. I think that that's a great point, and one of the things that I don't have the answer for, but something that's a discussion, if you look at the the teams essentially, I mean, what are they called exactly? The working groups? And in which are there items there where you would appreciate board input, a board member's input? Perhaps as part of the group. I, that's a lot to mention, and I just wanted to kind of bring it up because there may be some where there's some help that could be, you know, brought into that activity, and others where I probably would imagine you'd say, you know what? Let me, let me work that through staff and then we'll bring it back to you. But I just wanted to kind of open up that as a, just as a thought at some point.
Yeah, there's absolutely been goals that are, I guess, lend themselves better to your participation and your help. I'm just looking at the list, building security governance, got to be on the top of the list. That should be yours. It shouldn't be mine. So, and then there's, I'm sure there's elements of most of these things that would, you know, be similar.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all, we're busy with many things and we're not trying to add burden. We're trying to add assistance. And there may be some that we decide, yeah, that's, that could be good, and others.
Yeah, and seven and eight are your policies. So when you're talking about personnel policies, for instance, that's your Article Six. So, you know, you absolutely should have a strong hand in that one. And that's why your guidance tonight is helpful.
Cool. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to usurp. Carlo, Karen, any, any other comments you folks would like to make?
I'll take a go at it. This is my first go around at this, so I appreciate Mark, Vanessa, and Anne's input. And to what Mark said at the beginning, I think for a community conversations or community input, obviously, we have two town meetings a year, and we have an elected town meeting body. But I think it would be helpful to have a meeting before at least each town meeting for any resident to voice, ask, vent, whatever the case is, because, you know, even though we all belong to a precinct and there's precinct captains and, but how do you get to those people unless you know them personally, or a neighbor knows them personally? But I think it's helpful, like when we have a financial forum, or we have a downtown parking forum that, you know, anyone is welcome. It's a lot different now with Zoom as in person. But I think we're, last year, last town meeting, the April that was in June, where we had like a get ready for town meeting type session, and the kinks were worked out. And now we've gotten past that. It'd be nice to have a you know, early November, non-town meeting meeting, but you know, anyone's welcome. Just to get more input and different perspectives is that I know we all have our network of friends and neighbors, but you know, town meeting is a finite percentage of the population of our town, but I think it'd be, to what Mark said, it'd be helpful to get, whether it's quarterly, but at least before a town meeting. So we can talk about warrant articles. We can talk about what's going on and what's proposed. Because some things, you know, even for me, I get caught off guard when something comes up that I probably should know about, and I don't. And I'm a select board member. I think the town feels that way too, sometime, on some issues, not every issue, but but as far as what you three discussed already for the town manager goals and our goals, I think everything was well said, and I support all of them and any other recommendations that were made tonight. I think, you know, I would fully support. And it's, you know, it'll do me a long process, but I think if we get some measurable things, like Vanessa said, on the climate sustainability, or can we, when will the first EV station be installed, let's say? Or when, you know, when is the first new construction building going to be more green than the previous? Once we adopt green communities, that's down the road, but simple things too. How do we get the public to recycle more? Repurpose more, take advantage of the drop offs at the compost for electronic equipment and batteries and stuff at our house. I know that's all done already. But, you know, like for our council tonight, I mean, the Reading Coalition, that presentation tonight was very helpful for me personally. But I think how helpful is that to the rest of the town, and how can we promote that more, not just once a year? So stuff like that, I think is important. I know we're busy, we all have jobs and families, but I think it's a service that we need to provide as a board. Other than social media to have, I know we're going to try to do better job on office hours and stuff like that, but I think that would be helpful. So that's my two cents.
Thanks, Carlo. Karen? You're on the spot.
All right. Thanks. Good. Well, you know, you guys already had some wonderful ideas. Thank you for letting me listen. I, this is my first time doing this as well. My first thought is that there's too many goals here. Bob, what do you think?
There's not too many goals, there's just not enough time.
Well, you're being diplomatic.
Well, it's going to come down to prioritization and how much, you know, unexpected things like COVID, you know, distract us.
Right.
So I like the idea, I'm going to build off of what you all have already said. I like the idea of tying metrics to goals. And I like the idea of expanding, let's say, number one, community conversations. Let's, let's define if that's going to include some of the racial justice things that Ian has suggested. And let's put some metrics under there. How do we know we're making progress? Sustainability is a big one. So here's where I was struggling with. So sustainability, it can be a very, it can very, be a very big thing. So it's helpful that we have a sustainability plan. I like that the working group includes facilities, planning and engineering, because those guys are driving a lot of decisions and we need them on board with a sustainability plan and looking for low, no carbon footprints and thinking about things a new way. So that makes sense. And getting back to, I believe, what Mark touched upon, what role does RMLD play in our sustainability? Can we expand on this particular goal so that we can build a new relationship with them this year and really spell out, you know, how we can collaborate them? There's so many areas, again, Carlo mentioned, when are we going to see the first EVs? And I would echo Mark's earlier comments that they're pretty much getting to be something that RMLD could frankly give away to win new business. The Chargers themselves, but small cell is an issue that we need to talk about. They need to be brought up to date in our sustainability plans. And the MVP planning, you know, that should be part of our sustainability. And then David tonight brought up CPay, so I would love to see sustainability, and we can't do everything in one year, I totally understand that. Can we put some metrics around sustainability and green communities? I didn't even mention that. So we're making, we've been working very hard, staff's been working hard. And tonight, we decided to put the stretch code on the warrant. So we're making progress, and these are things that we can track. So that's what, for both of those items, and in fact, any of these that we keep, I need to see metrics. And Carlo alluded to this as well. Specifically, I, on three and four, I agree with Mark that we really need to focus on retention this year anyway. So I didn't know three and four could be combined into one goal. And, you know, and then you only have one working group and maybe it's more heavily weighted to retention. The Charter and General Bill updates, I see that as a lower priority personally. As, and seven and eight, I'm not sure those need to be broken out as separate priorities with separate working groups. And you guys can argue with me on that. Building security, since it's so top secret, I can't really comment on that. This, did I miss the one on seniors? I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo a few of my colleagues. Let's focus on making sure that we're reaching out to seniors in new ways. We've lost a community center that they can go to. So, and again, just as long as we can sort of define, you know, what are the kinds of things we're going to do? And that way we know, you know, next year, whether we were able to make progress or whether we had some other roadblocks thrown in our way. In Capitol Parks and Fields, I know there's been an ongoing initiative, and I know we need to make sure that conservation is a huge part of the Vurch Meadow planning. And with people staying closer to Reading this year because of COVID, I think that is a smart place to put our priorities. And I would agree that buildings are probably not going to happen this year. So I would say that's got to be a lower priority if you keep it here. I mean, ultimately, I think 12 is too many goals. I think you could have areas under a few of these goals. But 12 seems like a lot, and particularly, I had a question, are we supposed to, are we asking Bob and staff to focus on these equally? Or or for them to prioritize which ones are the most important, or to sort of say, well, we're going to put 20% of our time into this and 10% into that and not even get to that one? So that would probably help everybody. And that's it.
Well, I think it's important to note that not, Bob, as the town manager, doesn't actually do all of these, right? That there are staff under him where these efforts are distributed, and he oversees. So I think, you know, Karen, your point is a good one, 12 is a lot. You know, but some of them aren't all necessarily directly under Bob, and some of them are. So as we talk about prioritizing them, maybe considering who's doing the bulk of the work for each of these might also be a relevant item. And I missed, sorry, I missed two things that I wanted to flag. And thank you, Karen and Anne, because you reminded me. One is, I think we should have a gender neutral bathroom in town hall. I'd like to have the current spaces evaluated and find an appropriate space for one that is gender neutral. This is less than issue now with town hall being closed, so it's sort of a perfect time to make that evaluation. But once town hall reopens, I'd like to see that take place. We do have transgender individuals in Reading, and I'd like town hall to be a friendly place for them. And the other item was, you know, residential composting as part of our sustainability effort. Bob, I know you and the staff have done research on this before. You know, I think this is where the future of recycling and garbage disposal and composting is going. So it behooves us to incorporate this now before our garbage and recycling costs start to escalate. We've already seen changes in how that's being handled. There will be a cost factor in the future. It's not a matter of if, but when. Thank you.
So Bob, that was a lot of feedback.
Well, you know, it's interesting to hear all five of you together. That's really helpful. You know, in my head, I got some themes as to what's most and least important, certainly. And I'll work on this in the next two weeks and bring it back to you. Something that I think the board should think about, when you're thinking big picture, and maybe this is a little bigger than you were thinking. You know, I think back to the Charter Committee, I think it was a committee. The moderator asked town meeting members to volunteer to be on the Charter Committee. And he took everyone that volunteered. I forget the number, but it was less than 15. And those 15 individuals set a rather large and important policy for the whole town. Now, granted, town meeting had to approve it, but they were a very strong influence in those discussions. You know, and as the saying goes, not for nothing, most of them had been around when the charter started. So there was a lot, and I had, I met, I think I've met with the last two thirds of the meetings as the staff liaison and the town clerk stopped. There was a lot of focus on the past. The document had to be transitioned into the future because the original charter had a lot of things that they were afraid to let go of. Former elected boards had to be noted in the charter. And so we, you know, we got away from that, but I don't think the charter as a pretty strong document looks too far ahead, and maybe it needs to. And a charter is a three-year process, so it's something that you folks as a board maybe want to start thinking about as to how does the next charter process work? You know, it's supposed to happen every 10 years by bylaw. Honestly, I couldn't tell you where it is, but we're in the neighborhood of needing that within the next two or three years. So, you know, I thought about this when Carlo was talking about the, I guess, sort of community pre-town meeting meetings, if you will. You know, this is another way that folks could be engaged in a broader, in a broader way. But it would take a lot of work and a lot of thought to help direct people. And maybe some of the things you're thinking about as long-term goals really don't belong in a charter. They belong somewhere else, but I just sort of throw that out. That the past two charter efforts have been quite different than most of what you're discussing. You know, and I'll just conclude, you know, whether there's a lot of goals or a few. Just keep in mind, these are the town manager's goals, so when you start bringing in outside agencies such as RMLD, I can't tell RMLD what to do. I can talk to them, I can engage with them. You know, we've had this discussion in the past more with schools, when there was an issue that the town and schools would collaborate on, and I would just remind you that, you know, I'll do the town manager's piece. But if they're going to do an early, I'm sorry, and then a elementary school space study, I can't do that. So, you know, you've given me plenty to think about. I'll try to organize it. And I might try to prioritize it. You know, my thinking is one or two of these can probably just go away for the, for the year, just thinking, you know, of purely FY21. But, you know, goal number four, economic development expansion. We don't have to do a lot in FY21, really, because we're too busy with goal three, but we can't just let it disappear, because it's a two or three year process. So I'll try to find a way to give you more information on how we're going to emphasize different goals, because they wouldn't be equal. You know, right now, three is much more important than four. So I'll, I'll do my best to put this together for your next meeting. I have, we have the apartment head meeting on Thursday. I might, you know, kick some of the ideas around with the other department heads.
I saw Karen's hand first.
I was just going to comment that I definitely understand that you do not have a direct report in RMLD, and I would like to pledge, I will give you as much support as you need. I know where all of those commissioners live, and I will. I'm just kidding. They're answering, they're still answering our phone calls. They're great.
Just a couple of points picking up on what some of the things my fellow board members said. I think I might diverge a little bit from Karen in not including buildings among this year's priorities. I don't know how much time needs to be put into long-term building projects, but I think we have some significant ones on the horizon, and I don't think we can totally neglect the conversation this year. I think, you know, COVID-19 certainly derailed any real conversation about it for this year, and I think that I mean, makes sense. We were in, and you were in crisis management mode, but I think we do need to think about long-term building needs in this, in this upcoming year. And then I just, it's not that I disagree with the, with the importance of offering a gender neutral bathroom, but I want to make, just make clear for, to everyone that everyone has a civil right to utilize the bathroom that accords with their gender identity. That, and so, and if we did have a gender neutral bathroom, anyone could use it, whether they were male, female, whether they were transgender or cis, you know, that, that's, you know, gender neutral bathrooms are not the, the place that only transgender people can go and et cetera. So just wanted to make that clear for everyone.
Thank you for that, Anne.
Ready to wrap on this one? Okay, great. Very good discussion, folks. Very good. Very good getting that going. Let's do a spin through the warrant, Bob, if we could. Let's do a spin through the warrant, Bob, if we could. This is page 73 in your packet.
I'll go quickly. This is really all the leftover, well, the first three articles are required by charter. And the rest, by and large, are leftovers from annual town meeting. Let me just go down through them quickly. Yeah, all of them were on the warrant in April. So, you know, partly because boards and committees haven't met as much this summer, and by design CPDC and ZBA had nothing planned for November town meeting. So only the article you've decided on tonight would be sort of new. I've been in touch with the moderator, let me share, I sent out a letter from the moderator today. I don't think it's important, we go over it, other than his recommendation is to use the same approach and technology that we used at Springtown meeting, because it seemed to draw good attendance and have good participation. I will say that this November warrant is going to require more votes. I don't know that votes on debt authorizations are very controversial and offer many amendments. But a bylaw, you know, for instance, may, so we'll have to see. And I may want to get your opinions, you know, as we get closer to town meeting, what you thought the strengths and weaknesses were. Because the town meeting we had in June was fairly straightforward, except for instructional motions, there wasn't a lot of debate or discussion. It was, everyone knew it was an emergency and everyone got right to their business. But if, you know, any of these articles were to have sort of more of a full discussion, you know, did the technology work would be a question. So I do have, let me just stop sharing. I do have a draft warrant as well that you got. I have not, I've not yet met with Alan. My guess is this may not be a one-night town meeting. You know, there may be a couple, couple things in there. I will have to get from town council, the, we may need to add some wording in here pertaining to the virtual town meeting. And Mark, to answer your point you made earlier, Iveria got back to me, and I'll just paraphrase her. We are using part of the acts of 2020, I don't remember the number, in order to do what we're going to suggest, but we are required to ask town meeting if they will meet virtually on the day of the virtual meeting. And that is different than the annual town meeting requirements last spring. So we have to have a contingency plan that if town meeting is asked to meet virtually on the first night and they decline, there has to be a physical location and a date as a backup. So I'll work with town council and the moderator on that. I'm not suggesting that's a possibility, really, it doesn't really make sense, but there are some technicalities about how this town meeting has to be approached differently than annual town meeting was. And the approach that, you know, town council has suggested and the moderator has used does not require any further legislation in case any is forthcoming. This works today. So I don't know if the board has any questions, it's, where it's old business, generally, it's already been reviewed.
So the debt that's in here, starting at seven, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, these are projects that now need to move forward, right? That we kind of deferred, but now they need to move ahead, and they are.
And they're all in the capital plan. Either they have or haven't been funded, depending on their timing.
It's specific water sewer and storm.
Correct. And I believe I wrote to the board that one of the articles was withdrawn. The revolving fund authorization needs to happen with a joint meeting of FinCom and the select board, so as soon as they set a financial form, I'll certainly advise the board. Right now, technically, we have no authority to spend money in many revolving funds. There are exceptions, rec is by itself. And that's something we definitely want to clarify quickly, because the Board of Health, for instance, you know, has some expenditures contemplated. And right now, they have no authorization. We just learned that, I want to say 10 days ago.
Bob, you had mentioned, I think, September 23rd as kind of a possible date.
I just asked FinCom to consider the 23rd and then a second forum on October 14th, so I'll have to see what their schedules are like. Not to get into the finance too deeply, but it's extremely complicated this year. On the surface, you know, Ann may know where the printing press is, but the state created a lot of state aid. I don't know from what. And then we had a good number in new growth from Victor a week or so ago. So on the surface, there's some, some good news, but beneath that, as to the reliability, the new growth is real, that's, that's good. The state aid, I don't know, I don't know what to say. And then I'm meeting tomorrow with Sharon and Andre to talk about our collections, to see how they are. You know, we survived the pandemic in last fiscal year because it hit at the end, and we had already collected a lot of the revenue that was due us. Now that we may have a full year of pandemic, you know, just because, you know, we have, you know, tax bills and water and sewer bills, doesn't mean we're going to collect them. So I want to get an update on that, and as to whether that should influence how much money we spend. So, you know, we're going to go through the fall being generally uncertain. And I would suppose we'll take a cautious approach at November town meeting for spending further money. But I'm sure I will, I know I will have some suggestions on things we could do this year with more money if we had it. So again, that'll all come out in the financial forum, or presumably we'll need to.
Yeah. It sounds like if it's possible, if the finance committee can make it happen, that we should do that discussion in September.
Yeah.
To unencumber things that need to happen.
Yeah, and I have not talked to John a lot in the last two months, which is unusual, he's obviously been busy. I don't really know what the schools' needs are. I'm not really sure they know what the schools' needs are. There's so many changing plans as to virtual, in-person, and so on. I'm aware of some of the budget impacts, some of them are, if you will, positive, some are negative, but I don't know the whole picture. You know, and we're going to want to have a pretty good financial discussion this fall and lay a reasonable expectation for budgets going forward, I think.
Yeah, I don't know if there's been any update, but I understood there was a proposal to stop the funding of PPE unless it can be proven to be kind of emergency-related. I think that just came flying across from the MMA a week or so ago. And I don't know if that was a discussion or it's an action, but it was a FEMA directive.
Yeah, FEMA has been pretty clear that December is the cutoff.
Okay.
So I haven't heard any news since December is the cutoff. There's been a lot of wishing and hoping that the federal government would provide more resources. So far, those are not forthcoming.
Yeah, so I don't know where our planning was in terms of how much PPE we would need for the, I guess, the second half of the fiscal year, but if it turns out we can't get any more federal aid.
Yeah, we pretty much laid in supplies for a good long time.
Good planning, excellent planning. Board members, any other questions on warrant? So what we will do is we will vote on the warrant at our next meeting on the 22nd. That's our deadline, so we need to do it. Great. Minutes, let's do minutes. We have two minutes in the packet. Two sets of minutes. All right, I need a page help, 79.
I have two minor edits, Mark, that I sent to Caitlin. Caitlin, I'm not sure if you got them, I sent them shortly before the meeting started.
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Thanks.
I did not have any edits, thank you.
So I had one, one question in the eight, 11 minutes. Ask the board if they think it makes sense, on page two, under the open meeting law complaint, the second to last sentence, so their intentions were not for the public to not see the meeting, it was intended to limit public interaction. And the comment I had to it was, the intention was to allow for more open board comment while still having an open meeting. And I don't know if I'm getting too nitpicky or if that is a better description.
I think that's accurate.
I'm good with that.
And Carl? So I can, I can.
Yeah, that's fine.
I was planning to abstain on these minutes since I wasn't present at the meeting.
So. Caitlin, do you want me to show the screen or just, essentially, it's the second to last sentence under open meeting law complaint, it just deletes it, replaces it with, the intention was to allow for more open board comment while still having an open meeting.
Want to say that just one more time?
Yeah, in fact, the intention was to allow for more open board comment while still having an open meeting.
Got it.
I have a minor edit to this as well. For under open meeting law, it says the board discussed another open meeting law complaint from Kendra Cooper. I would just say the board discussed unopen meeting law complaint from Kendra Cooper.
A N instead of another.
On, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Vanessa, excuse me, Vanessa, were those your edits or there was more?
That was the only edit I had for that one. I have another minor edit for the other one.
Okay, so this one looks okay. Carlo, you know what, I actually have a motion. Sorry. Sorry, what screen am I looking for? PowerPoint, sorry.
You don't, you don't need it, I got it.
Okay.
I'm ready, okay. Motion to approve the minutes of August 11th, 2020.
As amended.
As amended, sorry.
Second.
Second.
Karen got the second. Any other comments? Not appearing, let's take a vote. Carlo?
Yes.
Ann? Oh, abstain, I couldn't hear you, actually, you're muted.
Abstain.
Thank you. Karen?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yeah.
And Mark, yes. So we're 401. And the eight, 25 minutes?
I have one minor edit, which is Carla Bachi moved to adjourn, that's fine. Vanessa Alvarado seconded it for the purposes of discussion. There's no need to add for the purposes of discussion, a second is just a second. So I would remove the everything after it.
I'm fine with that.
Sounds good, thank you.
By the way, I should mention, I learned something that I did not know, that I did not handle that appropriately. A motion to adjourn should be a non-debatable motion. It should just be a motion, if there's a second, then there's a vote, period. There's no discussion.
Really?
Is this under Roberts rules of procedure? Interesting, okay.
Roberts rules of order. It's a non-debatable motion. So I apologize, I didn't know that. I do now.
Well, and so we use Roberts rules of order, but town meeting is as town meeting rules?
Town meeting times.
Town meeting time, okay, so, yep, so we need to, Carla, we get to know, we need to know two different sets of rules.
Some of them are similar, but not all.
In goodness, right.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't have any comments on, on this. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay, Carla, can you make a motion, please?
All right. Motion to approve the minutes on August 25th, 2020, as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's a second, great, any comments? Not appearing, take a vote. Carlo?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yeah.
And Mark, yes. Thank you. And we're on to our last item, which is future agendas. So, right, make sure, yeah, future agenda, so the one thing we had talked about doing town manager review at the next meeting, we need to move that. Not all of the reviews are in, and once they're all in, we said that we would give Bob time to look at them first and in fact, reach out if he wanted to reach out. And I think that's a very important thing for us to make sure that we do. So I want to move it to an October meeting. I'd like to ask any folks who have not yet turned in comments to make sure that they are done this week and get them to Sean. And then Sean will share with Bob and I think, you know, we can assess at that point, you know, how much more time is needed, but let's move it, let's make sure it's not on the September 22nd agenda. It's one of the October ones, the sixth, if that works, and, you know, I think we should target the sixth, if that makes sense. So other agenda topics that we want to make sure that we have in there, you can see, I think, sorry, what page am I looking for that shows already what's on for the 22nd? We know that we have the public hearing on parking. The cell tower will make sure, excuse me, for the 20th of October meeting, that that will be a public meeting, I'm using a public meeting, not public hearing purposefully. I'm not sure there's something that we would be voting on at that point, but I think it's important to get input, and I take the suggestions that many board members made about asking some of the proponents, some of the, I guess, opponents to to have some thoughts on who might speak. I'm just looking to see, in the packet, we had kind of an out, did we have an outline for the next meeting? I just want to make sure it's there.
I just shared the screen, Mark.
Oh, sorry, I'm too busy looking at other screens, thank you.
If they, if we gave them, you know, if there was a designated person representing the opponents, would we be giving them more than two minutes then to make a presentation to us?
That sounds pretty reasonable to me. How do other members feel? Yeah.
What was that again? I missed that, sorry.
If we're encouraging the opponents of the cell tower to designate someone, we would give them more than two minutes to speak, and we would certainly, we would take other commentary from other residents who had it. But if we're encouraging them to designate someone, we could give them more than two minutes for a presentation.
Yeah, I agree with that, sorry, thanks.
Great, okay, so if it's okay with the board, I'm happy to speak with some, some folks and ask them for feedback, if that's, if they feel that would be appropriate and acceptable.
My quick question. It makes sense that they should have more than two minutes. Is this going to be this, at this meeting, the first time they might hear about some what I say, mitigating scenarios or solutions that staff might come up with?
So I think, I'm going to defer to you, Bob, but I think that it would be great if the staff has had a chance to look at. So, I think, I, I defer, I'm gonna defer to you, Bob, but I, I think that it would be great if the staff has had a chance to um, look at some options and uh, have that available in the packet, does that sound reasonable in that timeframe?
I really need to understand the objections. Um, I have not seen a wide range of objections from the emails you've received, so if you had an office hour that indicated differently, that'd be real helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I will um, send that across, I would say that the, one of the biggest core discussions was back to the issue of can the equipment be on the water tower? Can the cell equipment be on the water tower? What options are there, other best practices, other communities? You know, what, what's in the range of possible?
Other things that I heard mentioned were the height, uh, the removal of trees and the proximity to I suppose, the, the sidewalk and the existing homes on the other side of the plot from where the tower is now located. And the number of cell carriers it could hold.
I've heard and I think we've seen in emails, process concerns. And a question about why not require the cell companies to go through um, sort of the, the formal process versus having the town do it ourselves?
So, I think um, some of the, some of the answers to this actually were in the, the packet and presentation from that June meeting. But we, we, we didn't go through the whole presentation, so we, we, we saw pieces of it and therefore the public probably just covered pieces of it also. So, um, some of the information probably already exists, but some of it probably still needs to, to come forward to.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna assume that these residents um, have seen the presentation. Either of them, um, I've seen two from the staff, so I, I think we need to assume, sort of start the presentation with the assumption that they have not seen anything, all they know is that a cell tower is going up. And then build from there.
I did speak with some residents who, uh, today, who'd gone back through documents of both vi- video and packets that dating back to twenty sixteen. So, they had, they'd, they didn't actually see more presentations than I had.
Yeah, there's a July tenth, twenty eighteen meeting also, apparently.
Yeah, I think that um, we need to all, as staff, just take a giant step back and present a timeline, because there's a lot of people that are new to this process.
Right. Okay, any, any other topics at this point to bring up?
Um, just Mark, for the town manager goals, um, for next meeting, I definitely suggest more than fifteen minutes. We can work on that though offline.
So, since we're moving the town manager review, do you wanna allocate an hour?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I think based on the discussion tonight, um, I'll do my best at coming up with a draft, but I'm sure the board's gonna wanna have a discussion, so as much time as it needs.
Great, great, and then, um, so parking right now has oh, we have an hour and fifteen minutes, right? Uh, yeah, fifteen minutes, great. Okay, um, so I think our goal should be not to add any other agenda items unless they're uh, critical to that meeting. Good, okay. Uh, it would entertain a motion, Carlo.
Mark, I actually have just a quick question.
Sure.
Like, I, I was under the impression, this is just new to me, that the reviews, it was like a hard deadline. I, I, I didn't think it was a open to interpretation deadline.
Yeah, I, I don't think it was meant to be open to interpretation, but I think that the reality of kind of how hectic things are in life, in town activities, in COVID, that we need to have a little bit of flexibility. I did hear back from, uh, well, I was a couple of days late myself, um, but I did hear back from Sean that it wasn't completed and I, I tried to, on a schedule basis, just ask, okay, please make sure you get your stuff in. And it's not complete yet, but I think that's, that's kind of where we are. Um, I think even if they were in now, it's important that Bob have enough time to go through them and uh, ask questions, respond, whatever it's gonna be. So, I don't wanna jam that into the, into the next meeting, I don't think it makes sense. Had a little discussion with, with Bob about that, I don't think it makes sense to jam it in at this point, it makes much more sense to, let's do the process right from here. And it would've been great to have it on time, but we didn't, I'm sorry, Anne.
I was just saying, Bob asked that we not do it at the next meeting and I do think it's a, a courtesy to give Bob and each board member the opportunity to, to have a conversation. You know, I certainly would welcome the opportunity to have a conversation with Bob, so.
Yeah, that's not where I'm getting at, I'm getting at, where's the accountability if they're not all in by next week? I'm just, you know, I'm just asking.
I, I think with, what I would ask is that we, those who haven't sent it in, get it done for this week, please. We need it done, we need to move the process forward, let's make it happen.
I mean, yeah, I would, I would hope that everyone would get it in this week. And if, if they don't, then we do the review based off of those who have and give people opportunity to speak with Bob, who have done, who have done um, the work.
Okay.
That's a reasonable approach to it. Okay, ready for a motion?
Motion to adjourn our meeting on September eighth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Anne. Uh, okay, take a vote, Carlo?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yeah.
Mark, yes, thank you, we are adjourned. Thank you all, have a good evening.